If I can get everyone to take their seats.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, welcome to the Lompoc City Council meeting. This is Tuesday, August 1st, 2017. If I could respectfully ask everyone to turn off your cellphones or silence them if you have not already done so. We are returning from a closed session which began at 4:15. City manager, do you have any, or city attorney, do you have a...
There were four matters discussed and there was no reportable action.
Okay. One of the items was employee performance evaluation. We completed it and the city manager received a satisfactory, better, met all expectations, more than satisfactory evaluation, so. Okay, we are reconvening from that closed session and invocation, Esther Puntar. If you can get everyone to please rise, remove your hats if you have them on.
Good evening, let us bow our heads. Amazing God, we pause for a moment to give you thanks for the blessings in our lives. We thank you for the beauty of this valley. We thank you for the skies above and the green and brown hills around us. We thank you for its people. We thank you for the blessings of joy, of life, of family. We thank you for the ways this community has come together. Come together in times of illness and of sadness with Team Noah. Come together to share kindness with Lompoc Rocks. Come together in other ways as we seek the best for the people who live in this city. Lord, we also come knowing that there are things that divide us and that some of those rifts are very deep. We ask for your wisdom, we pray for guidance. We ask that we would be led to make the best decisions for all the people. Particularly those who do not have a voice. Particularly for children. To be supportive of families and businesses and all who live here. We ask, oh Lord, for your help. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please have a seat. Okay, before we get going, I just would like to announce that. Item number 13. Discussion of possible approval of the 2017-19 biennial budget will not be heard today. We staff received a quite extensive list of requests for evaluation. That list has not been fully evaluated, so that will probably come forward at the next meeting. City managers' report.
Nothing to report, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Okay, public comment on the consent calendar. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on anything on the consent calendar. Council members, John Lynn, Lompoc resident, I rise to speak on item number three, the transit center item. You know, I tell you the truth, I didn't read it. I thought, oh, this, we've discussed this many times, it should just go forward quite smoothly. And then someone called me and said, hey, there's something missing. Didn't you guys approve a restroom? I said, yes, we did, I'm sure we did, let me go back and look. So I went back and I pulled the staff report. And I went back and I pulled the minutes, just to make sure I remembered clearly. And my memory was correct. We discussed it all at great length. The restroom was mentioned a number of times, I highlighted in yellow. Council member Hoadall made the motion, then council member, now Mayor Lingel, seconded the motion. All of us on the council who could be involved, nor couldn't, spoke in favor of it. Now council member Osborne, then Economic Development Committee Chairman, spoke in favor of the restroom. And talked about the fact that it had been reviewed extensively in their discussions. And so we, as a council, voted that that's what we wanted. And council member Hoadall, perhaps wondering if everything would go along nicely, said, and I want the staff to come back with the design and show us before they go out to bid. Now, I've missed a few meetings, so perhaps they came back to you with the design and I apologize if I missed that. But this is not what the community agreed to. And a lot of downtown folks bought into this because there was going to be a restroom which was going to alleviate a problem. So at a minimum, I would hope you would pull it off for some discussion. Personally, I think unless you want to override the prior council, and I think that needs to be a separate motion, you need to do not accept all bids and get this fixed. Because it's simply wrong. It's not what we all agreed to, excluding the two new council members. And it's not what downtown needs and not what downtown asked for. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Okay, consent calendar, anyone else on the consent calendar?
Hi, my name's Bill Pierce, I know Mr. Lingel, I'm an on-call surgeon. I'd like to speak on the marijuana issue early if I may. As a surgeon who has worked in Humboldt County, which is ground zero for the marijuana cultivation and consumption culture, I may be uniquely qualified to comment on the detrimental effects of marijuana on people and on the social environment. I have observed over the years, since 1979, what appears to be a majority of two generations of young people impacted by the prevalence of pot in Humboldt County. I still work there. Many, if not most, of the kids are frequent users of pot. Often the result is a serious lack of motivation and they're frequently unemployed or employed in the cultivation of marijuana. Few of these kids that I've observed in my years as a paramedic and a surgeon there have ever risen above their circumstances. Many of them are using heroin and methamphetamines. And while marijuana has not historically been legal up there either, it's so prevalent that it's been essentially treated as though it were. The other problem with the marijuana culture is crime. Ripping off mature gardens is fast, easy money. I work in a tiny little hospital up there of 25 beds. And last year, we had three gunshot wounds sustained in the defense of marijuana grows. As a paramedic in southern Humboldt, many years ago, my ambulance company and I responded to many pot-related homicides. It's said by people who know that there are many shallow graves scattered out throughout Humboldt County. Please do not bring this kind of misery to Lompoc. Remember the movie It's a Wonderful Life with Jimmy Stewart? Let's keep Lompoc Bedford Falls, not Pottersville. Thank you.
Okay, wait a minute. I wasn't ready for the, no, go ahead, Dr. Pierce, that's fine. I'm going to be making a comment again during the discussion on the marijuana. I'm going to ask you to please be respectful of all speakers. You're going to hear speakers tonight on issues for. You're going to hear issues, and please don't interrupt the speakers, please don't interrupt the council. You're going to hear people speaking for and against certain issues. We want to be respectful of everyone, okay? You will all have an opportunity to speak if you so choose, but keep your comments to the microphone in the podium, not to the seats out there. We want to be able to listen to the speaker. We don't want to be distracted by the comments, so thank you very much for indulging me. Now, I just want to remind everyone, this comment period is for the consent calendar. If you want to speak to us on something else, please try to wait till that item comes up, or there is an oral communication coming up after our consent calendar. If you can't stick around for an item you want to speak on, you'll be able to speak during the oral communication. But it's best if you can wait for the presentations, because then your comments are heard with the presentation and during our discussions. They're much more effective. I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
Counsel, Will Skyler, Lompoc, item number three, the transportation center. I represent this evening the Oddfellows Lodge, we own the southwest corner of Ancient Ocean. And those that may be bound down through the alley there, the east-west alley, you notice there's a stairwell that goes up to our second-story building. Underneath that's a public restroom, has been for many, many years. I've personally cleaned up messes there for probably, well, I'm an over 60-year member of the lodge, so, quite a while. When the transportation center come up, I had the pleasure of serving on the city council and lent my support to making it happen. When we lost our Greyhound station, we lost a lot of our transportation. They always used to have Greyhound come to town and pick you up and deliver you back, now you got to go to Santa Maria or Vielton there, so. And we were concerned that they would be condemning some property to do that, and we were assured to know that the city would stay on the city side there. And I noticed on the denim number two there, it shows a deal with, looked like bus stops on both sides of Cypress. And this was not in the original plan, everything was to be on the city parking lot side, so I don't know whether the drawings just, I took it wrong and it's an explanation showing the other side or not. But hopefully you're not going to be taking out the church and the market there for the bus transit center. But we do need downtown restrooms. You got to do it. And we supported very much the program to do the center there with a public restroom. And if you know the downtown market there, they've had a rent portable restrooms put there because the merchants got tired, everybody was coming in using their restrooms all the time, so. It's got to be part of that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on the consent calendar? See, no one rises, we're going to close public comment on the consent calendar. Consent calendars consist of things that are generally considered routine unless a council member chooses to pull an item. Does any member choose to pull an item? Council member Osborne.
I rarely agree with Mr. Lynn, but at this point I do because I was on the Economic Development Committee and we did a review and the restroom was a vital part of it. So yes, I'd like to pull item three because when I was reviewing it, the restroom was missing.
Okay, so item number three is going to be pulled and it will be heard just before the second oral communication. Any other council member? Council member Starbuck.
I just wanted to make comment that I will not be voting, I will abstain, I own real property within 500 feet of this proposed transit center.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendars, item number one, two, four, five, no, four and five, what is? And six, yes. Okay, I'll need a motion.
I so move.
Second.
And I need to make a comment real quick. I received an item, a comment here that part of the destruction of certain obsolete items does, will not include the CDGB, box number CDD023. That was pulled, that'll be pulled, those will not be destroyed, so everything else will be destroyed. Okay, so we have motion as second, any discussion? And let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, so item number three will be heard separately. Staff presentations, does it not appear that there are any? Okay, this is oral communication, this is your opportunity to speak on any item that can come before this council. If the item, as I stated, if the item is heard, going to be heard later on, it's best if you hear, you speak then. But if you cannot stick around until that item is heard, you're more than willing, I mean, you're more than able to come up and speak to us now.
I'm Dr. Lawrence Reamer, I've practiced in Lompoc for 41 years now. Marijuana is a drug with adverse physical, psychological, and public health effects. Proceed with caution. The city of Santa Maria has put a moratorium on the marijuana industry, not making further decisions until August 2018. I hope we do not have more lenient laws than other jurisdictions in our area. I do not want Lompoc to become known as a marijuana capital. I hope our city government will not become addicted to the anticipated marijuana revenues. In particular, I urge the city council to refrain from issuing temporary local licenses to nonprofit entities to provide marijuana, whole plants, and certain other products to low-income persons as a, the council is allowed to do under section 26070.53B of Proposition 64. It's like giving out cigarettes to soldiers in World War II to get them hooked. Remember that drug-driving fatalities now exceed drunk-driving fatalities according to a 2017 report of the Governor's Highway Safety Association. Let the city not allow the spread of marijuana industry beyond the minimal compelled by Proposition 64. You have the ability to restrict the marijuana industry, except you can't restrict the transportation of marijuana inside our jurisdiction. I understand that there's been a letter signed by 28 physicians at the Lompoc Valley Medical Center asking that we do not try to spread the, to spread marijuana in our community. And this was done on a vacation time, because a lot of doctors are out of town right now. But there were 28 and perhaps more that had signed this letter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Dave King. I've heard these doctors speak about the adverse effects of marijuana. And I think it's more in their best interest to have prescription drugs for pain and seizures and chemotherapy with side effects. I think medical marijuana has valid use and I think we should move forward with at least medical marijuana. Legislation in the city, you know, control it and legislate it, but we should have medical marijuana dispensaries and growing. These doctors that keep coming up here, it's in their own best interest to not have it so you can keep prescribing Vicodin and opiates and that kind of stuff. And they're making a ton of money off it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And remember, this is on consent calendar, if you can wait till this. Oral communication, yes, okay. So if you can, yeah, if you can wait till that item comes forward, you're probably better off.
Hi, I'm Mark Hashemala, Transcendental Health. I am also a drug and alcohol counselor here in Lompoc. I work with Street Outreach, once a week I go out and work with the homeless. I am also trying to start a medical dispensary here in town. I've been propositioning this since September of last year, so it's almost been a year now that we brought this forward. We have come to this point in time now and we have a lot of opposition that really hasn't been here throughout the whole thing, through the ad hoc, but we do appreciate it. We want all the opinions brought up. It's not something that I ever want to put in anyone's face, this is a decision, these are people that have chronic diseases that need their medications. If you don't need it, then you don't have to smoke it. For drug-free Lompoc, I work on a weekly basis to make Lompoc drug-free. But I'm sorry, this is a war we are truly losing. We are inundated with methamphetamine. There are extreme amounts of heroin addicts that live in our riverbed, that live outside of Mervyn's, that live in many of our homes. In fact, probably everyone in here is related to someone that is in trouble with methamphetamine or heroin. These doctors did get up and speak, the man before me was absolutely correct, I deal with this all day long. It's an epidemic that can be cured by CBDs. This is an extract that comes from marijuana that does not have THC in it, you do not get high from this. So please educate yourself, educate your family. If you have children and you're going to have your children speak, it's your job to educate your children. Please, we're getting this close. If you're in opposition of this, you are actually lobbying for the cartels and the drug dealers and the gang members. Those are the ones that are profiting right now. They don't want this to be legalized. What are we doing? We're fighting this in the total wrong direction. I do this all day long, if you want to come help me, please speak to me after. We can go out, I'll take you all out and we can go and, and you can pray with them if you'd like, talk to them, I have plenty of, there's drug addiction out there. It's not marijuana, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Okay, so it's just. Okay, we're having a discussion right now about rearranging the agenda. It appears that there are a lot of people here that want to speak on the marijuana issue, which is towards the end of the, yeah, towards the end of the discussion. It's item number 12. Now, if we do that, I've also been asked to rearrange and hear items number 11 and 12 in that order right after oral communication. So that would be, that'd be coming up next, it would replace item number seven. We'd go with item number 11, item number 12, and then go on to number seven. So with that, I will need four council members to agree to do that. So if you agree to it, just verify, I can just, Councilor, Vegas?
I'll agree.
I'll agree.
Councilor Osborne?
I'll agree.
Councilor Molesby? No, that's three. That's three. Okay, so we have four. Okay, so we'll continue with oral communication, but now realize if you want to speak about marijuana, if you can't stick around later, for the, coming up later, it'll be heard right after number 11, which should be relatively quick. So anything else on oral communication? Okay, with that, we're going to close oral communication and we're going to move to item number 11, which is consideration of the direction regarding a request for waiver of development fee. And let's see, we have Brian.
Had to take the long way over. Good evening, I would like to present item number 11. As you know, the action before you, whoops. We'll see if it stays. Not yours. The American Legion Post 211 requests the city council waive the development fee fees associated with processing a development plan to extend an outdoor seating area for the serving of alcohol. The recommendation tonight is that the city council consider four options. The first option would be to waive the development deposit and processing fees for the project. Option two would be reduce by 50% the development deposit for the project. Option number three would be to direct staff to return with an action item to reduce by some amount the development fees for projects not exceeding certain sizes. Or lastly, provide alternate direction. And we quickly summarize the item before you, starting with some background. On September 9th, 2016, planning staff received notice from the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control that the American Legion located at 630 North H Street would like to license an exterior patio to serve alcohol. Following that inquiry, planning staff informed the applicant the proposal required an application for a development plan in order to extend the outdoor seating area, which is already out at the site now. The applicant was informed of the fees for review, which would include a $5,582 deposit. Those fees are encompassed by a planning fee of $435 plus a deposit of $3,000 for building review. Another deposit, the building review would be $1,000, and then engineering review would be another $1,000. These fees are used for staff time to review and process the application for approval and consideration by the Planning Commission. The applicant is now requesting the city council waive the entire amount for the development fees associated with processing a development plan, citing the fees are a financial burden for a nonprofit organization that serves men and women in the United States military. Allowing the outdoor expansion of the American Legion facility requires appropriate review by staff and Planning Commission. The additional space needs to be reviewed to assure parking on the site and circulation are adequate. The fire and building department would also need to review that proposal. Requiring a development plan requires the city of Lompoc to review the proposal and attach conditions of approval relating to the exterior expansion of the patio. That review requires staff time and cost recovery as a result. If the fees are waived, the city council, then, by the city council, the Planning Commission would still need to review the development plan. And those, those charges would be absorbed by the general fund. In conclusion, just a reminder that the request by the applicant, which is the American Legion, is to waive the complete fee, all of the fees. But as I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, you have four options this evening. That concludes the staff presentation, and we're available to answer any questions if you have at this time.
Councilman Starbuck.
Mr. Robertson, have you been there and reviewed what they're trying to do?
I have, I have, councilman. I went out and took some photos today and I looked to see where that was located on the site. I notice right now it's taking up some required parking. I've worked with, with Richard as well, just kind of him explaining the proposal. But as far as an application and a formal submittal, that hasn't been reviewed by our office at this time.
I'm going to throw in, you used the word to serve alcohol. I know that's not the case, they are not serving alcohol. I'd like to alert the Legion that I was the guy on your fence at 1930 last night, so if you review your tapes, it's me. I've been to this establishment several times and when I looked over the fence, to my amazement, the only thing I saw was a barbecue pit, two patio sets, and it looked like a bench or a meat prep thing. In recent years, I know that the Legion had went ahead and enclosed it with a fence similar to what our fire department did at Station 1. The parking has been like that in that parking lot, I couldn't tell you. There is a gate in the back that allows access for fire, et cetera, but it's also for security, so people aren't going through there. How do we get to this point with a barbecue pit that we're asking? How do we get to this point with a barbecue pit that we're asking the American Legion to fork out $5,000 for a review of a pit and two patio sets?
Mr. Halverson. Mr.? Okay, excuse me. Remember, we want to be respectful of everyone, so we're hearing the speaker, we're hearing the council discussion. You are really distracting the council when we do this. So I appreciate your enthusiasm, but you'll be able to speak on this item in a few minutes.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'd like to respond to clarify. First of all, we, I share with you, there was a little confusion for me walking in to understand the meaning of the word "serve," because there, and I think there were members of the Legion that also misunderstood that, because the concept was as though it's the precise location where the beverage is going from the bartender to the customer. And that's not it. It's a wider, the use, the terminology when we're talking about "serve" is their ability to take the drink, which may have been handed over at a bar area inside, and then be able to carry that outside, go out to, as they said, maybe have a drink with their cigarette, and not have to leave the drink behind. So it is service. And by virtue of what you saw, is what I saw when I went out to visit the site, they're planning on people's being out there for longer than just one cigarette, because there is a barbecue. There is, there are patio sets with chairs, tables, and awnings. There are elongated bench seats as well. So when you start, it really, by the intent is for people to be out there longer than just the momentary to go out and have the cigarette, but to be there and enjoy. So all of that, if we're going to comply with the law and be respectful of everybody's rights, including neighbors, we need to go through a process that vets and reviews that. And so our desire is to help, the reason we're going through the process regardless of what you do with fees, the, to answer your question, is to make sure that all citizens are represented. So to understanding things like, well, are you planning on playing music there, because this is residence nearby, and do we need to restrict the hours and how loud the music could be at certain hours, things like that. That's just part of all the vetting. So that is why we go through the process, because the law requires it, because citizens, particularly neighbors, are entitled to that process. So that's why those fees are as much as they are, because it involves review that has to come from multiple departments, again, for us to be in compliance with the law.
I guess, Mr. Weymiller, part of this is, is this isn't a new patio. I mean, the fencing is rather new, but I think that was put up as a, you know, outdoor smoking area, so to speak, and, you know, I just, I'm almost thinking that government is like, we're overstepping our bounds again with this one. It's, I understand the vetting, but it's, I don't know. I mean, you know, if you were to put a patio, or, you know, a patio set and a barbecue in your backyard, or, you know, it's the same kind of vision that I'm wondering about.
Yeah, well, again, the laws that we are seeking to uphold, both you and I, because we both took the same oath of office to protect and uphold those laws, calls for us to do that, including that that area would have been built with the appropriate building permits. It was not, other than the specific barbecue area was, but not the balance of everything else that's there. So our hope is just to bring them into compliance. And you have the opportunity. I had, in my discussion with the American Legion, because the issue seemed to be that hitting their organizations was quite a met of, quite an amount of money, and I recommended they might make that request. So we're trying to satisfy as many folks as possible, but I don't think this is a case for government overextending. I think this is a case of government really, truly trying to assist and help.
Yeah, I'll concur with that, but sometimes, you know, the government assisting is an oxymoron in a sense.
Amen.
But, you know, in this case, it would seem almost like a common sense call. Mr. Halverson, I have great faith in him as a planner. He could go out there, he could look at it, and he says, you know, this is right, this looks good, there's no overhead, there's no structural. Why doesn't the Legion give me whatever the cost is for a CUP? And we just do a CUP through the Planning Commission very quickly, and that would just resolve all the staff time that would be involved in, the cost to the Legion.
Because we're not sure about, and normally, for somebody, we'd be charging, we're not sure exactly how long and how many hours are going to be involved. We would hope that even if we're taking a deposit that's that big, that we're returning most of it, because, yeah, Mr. Halverson would be very efficient and very effective, and his being able to go through and review those things and ensure that they're okay. In this case, we know it's going to take a little bit longer, because as Mr. Halverson noted, this was built, again, without permits, that included the consumption of a number of the parking spaces that would otherwise be required for a gathering place for, of this size. So again, we're just trying to get them into compliance, but we, this, it can't just be a wink, wink, you're okay, we'll sign off, and we'll never look at. We really need to go through and come up with the solutions that are going to allow that what they built, again, without permits, that we can get them permitted and get them compliant, and that we resolve any other issues, including those public safety issues that may exist.
Yeah, well, the next thing that would have me concerned would be the issue of, oh, you're short three parking spots, tear down your barbecue pit. I mean, this is a private organization. They do host the public there on invitation. There's a couple of, a little small business, and I'm aware of, in there, and there's an automotive shop at the end.
Right, we hope, we hope we don't have to tear out anything to make room for parking space. It might be as easy as going and verifying, you know, the ability to use some neighbor's space or something like that. We can, we can look for creative outcomes that aren't going to have an adverse impact.
Yeah, I just, you know, this is the term I'm going to use here. It seems like we're making a mountain out of a molehill, but I'd like to hear the rest of the discussion.
Right, well, the question is really, we don't have any question, there's no question here about whether or not we're going through the process. We need to go through the process. The question is, do you want to waive those fees or revise those fees or not? That's the issue before you. Thanks.
Councilor Mosby.
I think it's important to understand that, if you read the bottom of the page here, that it was a notice that received by planning staff from the Department Alcohol Beverage Control Board that triggered this. So it's, something else came about down the road, but if Mr. Halverson can help me out on page three of four here, in the fourth paragraph, you have another process that, coming down the line that should make this, you have a tiered approach, an application process for smaller projects to be addressed, but how long before this process?
Well, that process would be, would develop after you guided us to take that direction, and then we would, we would work on that. We don't have anything right now to present, but just an option available if you would like to explore some changes for the future.
Well, it says, it should be noted, the city is currently in the process of developing a new zoning ordinance and the possibility of having tiered approach.
True.
So is that something we could try to implement here, or is that?
Yes, at a later date. Obviously, the zoning ordinance will be reviewed by the city council at a later date, and so we could look at smaller projects and maybe some streamlining and reduced permits for these type of projects. So that's definitely something we could look into.
That's a couple months out, though, though. That's not something we could try to implement now?
No, it's not anything right now.
You guys are working, trying to cure this in the future, right?
Yes, we are. We have a draft ordinance. We just haven't, we don't have anything right now to present to you.
So we're...
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize, too, that the cost may seem a lot, but at the same time, because it is a smaller project, you know, that would be just the deposit, what we didn't use, as the city manager mentioned, would be returned to the applicant, and we don't anticipate using all of that money. As I said, I will be efficient and get it done quickly, and it's not going to be a huge cost, as shown, but we have to at least take the deposit in to cover the city and our costs.
Don't jinx yourself. I've seen them go from $12,000 to $60,000 real fast. And I remember in the check register, or the check payouts, I think it was last time, we had two, Mr. Wilkie could, we had two of them that went out last time, I think they were refunds to applicants, that were, almost 50% of it went back, I believe.
I didn't look at those specifically, but there are applications where there's a deposit made for a service, and that's tracked for time and materials, and there are some fees that are just, this is a fee amount for this service.
Yeah, I think we had the one on the 500 block of North I, and I forget what the second one is, but I believe they were both on that register last time. So I mean, it shows that you're looking at maybe, and I think one on I is real similar to this, because you had kind of a change of use and such, so it should be similar in that. I know you don't want to jinx yourself, because you don't know where it's going to go, but I think it's important where we're going, where we're going here, it's, we have to try to treat everybody equally and the same, and it's also, it's an item that makes this property more valuable as well, because you are getting the permit. The permit transfers with the property, right? I mean, these guys aren't going to sell the property, but the permit, should this go through, will be held with the property, correct?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. It would run with the land, as long as they didn't expand or intensify that use, yeah, it would run with the land.
And in a CUP, isn't there allowed a minor expansion without a reevaluation?
Yeah, we could look at, look at that on a case-by-case basis. This would be a development plan, it would be a conditional use permit, just a clarification.
All right.
But yes, it would run with the land.
Councilor Vaca.
Mr. Halverson, could you kind of walk me through the scenario, how you could get a barbecue pit permitted in the middle of a parking sort of area without, that had been done once upon a time, okay? From what I understand, is the barbecue pit in that area of the American Legion there is permitted, so why wouldn't the rest of it have been looked at once upon a time? I'm sure you weren't there. And how would we get around that? Which means that they were in compliance to a point. I understand the direction that they're going with. Hey, it's a nonprofit veterans group, without a lot of assets, a lot of money, and from what I understand, their application to the ABC was done on their own, just to make sure they weren't in compliance. They went and asked this question, they had an application in there that said, hey, even though there weren't any choices, that we're not going to actually serve it out there, which means you could look at it a couple of ways, which means it could, it could say, we're not going to have a bar out there, and we're not going to take money. What it is, is it was kind of an overflow area, which could be a little bit of an entertainment or party area, or just a barbecue area. But now, when the fence goes up, all of a sudden, there's an issue with parking and everything else, when that area was actually permitted to be a barbecue area, okay? So that would be my question to you. Under today's standards, how would you get around that? Would you typically go and give a permit for a barbecue in that same area, and then when they put the fence up, you cry wolf, or so to speak, say, you're out of, you're out of bounds? I understand about the fencing and to do a complaint. It's not about the city doing anything wrong, or anybody doing anything wrong. I think what their intent was to be in compliance, but it's the cost of being in compliance that they were, they were questioning here.
I don't have any history about the barbecue itself, but I do know that the patio area that was established in the parking lot was not permitted. I mean, it's one thing to say that it was permitted a long time ago, and now we're saying they need another permit, but that's not the case. It was basically established in the parking lot without review by staff, without, yes, it was before my time, but at the same time, they established it without review by staff, meaning they did not apply for the development plan. So just to kind of set the record straight, is that was illegally established, and the only reason why it was brought to our attention, as the councilman already said, is they, the ABC contacted our office and wanted to find out if it was permitted, because before they issued an ABC license for that patio, it needed to be permitted, and it was not permitted. So it was, it never got approval in the parking lot.
So, so again, my question is, and I know that that barbecue pit was permitted, so I'm going to go back to that question here. Under today's standards, would you be permitting a barbecue pit in an area like that, even though maybe the fence and all that wasn't part of the original plan? Someone did review and issue a permit once upon a time, because it's on file.
Okay, yeah, I'd have to get some background.
You get what I'm saying? You can't just permit a barbecue pit in an area and then say, hey, you can't use it, you know?
Right. I don't know all the details about the actual barbecue. I just know that the patio area, which is the topic tonight, the extension of the patio area to have alcohol and drink alcohol out there was not permitted. I don't have all the background about the actual barbecue itself, so...
And again, I'm with Mr. Weymiller, as far as the staff is doing everything they can. Basically, what we're doing is we're looking at the cost for someone that actually, on their own, they've looked to see how they can be in compliance, and they were actually surprised to a point to say, wow, you know, that there was an issue here, and now that there's buildings across the street, there could be more of an issue, but really, they're going to use, they use it minimally, minimally, so that would be my issue, okay? It's not like they're going to have loud parties out there. But thank you, sir.
Councilor Starbuck.
Yeah, just a quick question. If, however this comes out, then the Legion does wind up getting this through and gets the permit, are they already approved to serve liquor at that point? Are they just waiting on this permit for the ABC to issue them the extension on this?
ABC would want to see the approval first, and then after that, the ABC license would come back to us, and then we could sign off after we get that approval of that patio area to drink alcohol, as long as there's enough parking, it met development standards. I also noticed that when I went out there today, it appears to be a van-accessible space is actually being taken up by the fence, so obviously, that's real important, that that's looked at.
The what is, I'm sorry?
The van-accessible space, so for handicap accessibility. Now, that's not something the planning division looks at, that's something the building division looks at, so it's multifaceted, there's other departments that need to look at it. And of course, the police department is concerned as well, as far as ingress and egress to that area, so...
Was that what their reviewed in the police department comments were?
Yes, regarding the fact that they don't want public access to that area.
Right, that's, hence the fencing.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to open this up for public comment now on this item. You have up to three minutes to speak to us on this item.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jacob. I happen to have been diagnosed with cancer at the age of 17. At first, it was very hard to get by. It was very hard for me to be able to use cannabis because of the way I grew up and my thoughts on it. Personally, I feel no point would be made without first citing and quoting all of my sources, which come from the Trichome Institute, a school I went to for a year in Colorado. Cannabis itself is made out of 128 different cannabinoids, one of which is THC, which is the one that is responsible for the quote-unquote feeling of being high. It is the only cannabinoid that does this. CBD is a muscle-relaxant painkiller that I have used to help me throughout my treatments since I've been diagnosed. If you look here, you can see the U-shaped scar across my neck that came to me after three surgeries and two radiation doses. I'm a big advocate for the medical use of cannabis for patients who truly do use it for what its intended purpose, such as other medications, like Adderall, which is chemically the same thing as meth. Adderall is an amphetamine, meth is an amphetamine, and both can be abused and used as such. It's our responsibilities as adults to use cannabis wisely in a responsible manner. It's our responsibility to regulate it in a responsible manner for those to use it who do need it. I do believe heavily that it should be out of the hands of all children under the age of 21. I personally believe that cannabis can be used for medical purposes, and it has been proven in studies to help patients reduce pain. Cannabis itself is a psychoactive drug consisting of, I can't pronounce the word exactly right, but basically, it's a cannabinoid, which is THC. When THC is consumed, it breaks down into THCA, which is a stronger, more psychoactive drug. When cannabis is consumed orally, it becomes a more powerful, more potent drug, and it's our responsibility to know how cannabis works, whether or not we're going to legalize it, whether or not we're going to do anything with it. You should first research a substance, state your facts, stake the opinions backed by facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, this is public comment on item number seven, which is 11, I'm sorry. Just as a reminder, this is public comment on item number seven, which is 11, I'm sorry. 11 regarding a request for waiver of development fees. So, you confuse issues if we start talking about other things. So, just try to stick to this item, item number 11. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm one of the bartenders over at American Legion Post 211. I wanted to clear up and let you guys know that our hours of service are Monday through Thursday from 3:00 in the afternoon to 7:00 o'clock at night. Fridays, we go from noon to maybe about midnight. We do have some karaoke, but we never get too loud. And we do pay respect to the neighborhood that is around us. Saturdays, we are from noon to 7:00. And Sundays, we do a lovely breakfast from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 at least twice a month. When it comes down to noise, I don't see a problem. Serving out on the patio, we do not serve drinks. We are bartenders, not waitresses. If you actually want to consider it serving, I guess whenever you're hosting a barbecue out on your back patio, you're not a host. You turn into a server when you're doing a barbecue at your own home. We're not servers when we're there at work. People come in, they grab their drinks, they want to go outside, socialize, enjoy the sun. That's what we live in California for, right? They want to have a couple of drinks, have their cigarette, socialize, just have a good time. Maybe just talk to some of their army buddies, war vets, doesn't matter. We're just trying to pay a service. That's all we're trying to do, not cause a nuisance. And when it comes down to the handicap parking, we've got a van accessibility. They're able to get out of their vans just fine. It's not blocked off or anything. And there is only one and a half parking spots that is blocked off with this extension of the patio. Don't believe me, I can even bring in a photo that we can go over and take a photo tomorrow afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, and yes. My name is Richard Gash. I'm the commander of Post 211. Couple items, we will not be serving alcohol there. Even that's play on words, I guess. Waitresses, bartenders, I should say, will not be going out there and serving alcohol. You have to come inside the bar and take a drink, get a drink and take it out there if you choose to. One reason that our patio area was extended is because I understand, and I'm not sure it's state or city or county, really have to be 20 feet from a doorway, I believe, to smoke. Well, our patio was, I mean, to extend it in order to go that far out, there wouldn't have been any room for smokers to go out there. So, that was one of the reasons it was done. I would like to thank Mr. Wyman Miller and Councilman. I think they explained it very well. We are a nonprofit organization. We're not out there to make a profit. We're here to serve veterans, their families, and their, maybe guests that they might bring in. But otherwise, we are a nonprofit organization. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
As this gentleman just said, you know, this here is our veterans. I think that we should be behind them 100% or more to see what we could do to help them, not hinder them. This is the place they go to relax, enjoy each other, sit back, have a beer or something like that. That's fine. I mean, come on. We should work as hard as we can to make things easier on these people, not harder on them, especially dollar-wise and stuff down there. I have no idea why we're even here talking about it, to be honest with you. We should be helping them. I'll do everything in my power to help them all I can if they need any help to do anything down there. I hope everybody can work with them and try and do the best they can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring you back to the council. Let's, okay, so we can talk about the different options on number 11, if you'd like. Or someone would like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion if it's possible.
Sure, go ahead.
I'd like to thank you guys for your service. Appreciate it. I see that you're a nonprofit organization. I've actually seen the patio out there. I think it's actually admirable that you guys on your own are facilitating this. It's not like someone went out there and told you you had to do this. You know, I think you guys have gone through the gauntlet to go over here and see what you can do to help. And I think city staff has actually been accommodating also, including Mr. Wyman Miller. So, there's no one here in the wrong here. It's just a matter of affordability on this issue. So, I think this is something that can be easily brought up, that can bring you in compliance. I think with the ABC ruling, from what I understand, that there wasn't a gray area there when you apply for this license. The license is for you to serve alcohol inside the building. But then again, you had this patio area. And from what I understand, it was you and your group that actually asked about this also along with the application, okay? There wasn't a gray area that said, hey, we're not going to serve or we're just going to only go outside. So, I understand. And as far as city staff's concerned, I think they're also in the right. It's a matter of, hey, you guys are a nonprofit group. I think you guys could use all the help you guys can get. I've been there. I've seen you guys. I've seen the veterans. I've seen all of you who have been very cordial. You guys aren't making money. I can see this, okay? I think you're doing that as a service for your veterans to have a place to go, camaraderie, have a little bit to eat. But it's not a business from which you guys are flourishing, from what I understand. So, I'd like to make the motion that we waive these development fees. It does change things for some other people. But in this case, you know, we support the veterans for everything we do. And I'd like to applaud them, especially in these times. It also brings to account everything in our freedoms that we have here. And you know, I think we should feel very proud that these guys come to us for a little bit of help. And the fact that we're not finding any wrongdoing within this, as far as staff or anybody, it's not a wrongdoing, it's what can we do to help each other where it's not a detriment to the city. So, that's my motion. I'd like to make a motion that we waive these fees for this group at this time.
I need a second.
I'd like to just do a little discussion here very briefly on this.
I think we should probably have a second before we do this discussion.
Well, okay.
I need a second.
I'll give you a second.
Okay, now we're open for discussion.
I guess one of my things here is, is if it was me, I'd have been begging for forgiveness instead of asking for permission at this point, it sounds like. But one of the things that happens here is there are a lot of nonprofits in Lompoc. And I'm not going to just tag on the American Legion. I'm going to tag on the drug rehab. Chuck Madsen's got many projects he's been, hasn't done because of fees. There's a lot of action in town that these fees impact. Whenever we waive a fee, what happens is it's picked up in the general fund, fire, police, parks, streets, roads, et cetera, et cetera. Well, it's easy to say, you know, we will waive a fee. And then it becomes a gifting of public funds. General fund money is all of your money. I want to make an exception here so bad, but I'd sure like to broker a deal. And I mean, I'll be with the motions and the votes. I'm going to vote with it. But what I wanted to ask you, Mr. Gash, is if we could get you out of here with a fee for $8.35, would that be acceptable to the Legion? And I use these fees based upon the applicant-informed fees. And I'm considering it to be a very minimal fee. It's.
I hope you mean $855.
$835 is what I was referring to.
Okay, $835, that's even better. Yes, that, we would agree to that, that it might be a problem because we are a nonprofit, but we would agree with that.
Well, you know what, like I say, it would be a sub-motion. But on the other hand, I feel bad for the nonprofits that we've never waived. I'm a veteran. I climbed your fence last night, you know? I really want to work with you guys. I just think that $835 would be fair and you would get everything you want. The city and the taxpayers would receive a little bit of relief on it. I mean, I don't want it to impose a hardship on you, but I'd like to make it equitable across the board. So, I would really, if that would have worked with your organization, sir, I would like to make a, what is the motion called?
Substitute motion.
A substitute motion for that.
That would be fine. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir, for yours.
Okay, so.
That was a given.
Okay, so I need a second on the substitute motion now.
I'll support the substitute motion. Thank you, Derek, for bringing it up.
And.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a comment on this?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. One of the reasons that I asked for the fee waiver is I've actually visited the site. I'm not opposed to actually having them contribute. What I was trying to do is help them. From my viewpoint, I understand it's a gifting of general fund money in the public funds in the middle of our budget crisis. But come on, guys. You guys have to go down there and see these veterans down there. And the cost was going to be minimal, okay? What I, the reason I made this motion is because I knew the costs were going to be minimal, not because I was there to actually help deplete the general fund in our time of need, okay? So, I wanted to reiterate that, that it was, I think the cost would have been minimal. So, not that we were trying to give away the farm when you think that we're over here trying to give money away in the middle of our budget negotiations here or whatever. So, I just wanted to clarify that, okay?
Councilman Mosby.
Is it inappropriate for us to offer to assist them financially as council from up here?
From a legal perspective, no. And the staff report had a provision that was a reduction. So, all I'm hearing is a change.
I mean, personally, though, personally ourselves, would it be inappropriate for us to offer? Like, I would offer as well myself to, whatever they don't got, I'll make the difference for them.
No.
Okay, well, along with that, whatever you guys don't get, I'll make up the difference to fill it up for you guys, okay?
Mr. Mayor, just procedurally, based on the comment that Councilman Vega made, if he would withdraw his motion and Councilman Mosby would withdraw his motion, then you don't need to go through the substitution process.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so there is no second on.
I'll go ahead and withdraw my motion to allow Councilman Starbuck's motion to move forward.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Okay, so you get your permits. It looks like you've got more than the $835 coming your way, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, you go ahead and applause with that. That's a good one. Okay. Thank you all for that. That was very good. Now, we're going to move on to item number 12. Item number 12 is discussion and direction regarding medical and recreational marijuana uses in Lompoc. And at this point, I want to remind everyone, I see we have some drug-free signs here. I see we have some T-shirts saying things and hats and everything. I have no problem with that, but please don't make a big display. Keep your opinions to yourself until you come up to the podium, okay? And we'll get through this. And we're having some technical difficulties, so. And just as a reminder, tonight, we are not making any decisions to legalize or make it illegal to use marijuana. This is direction to staff as to potentially what would be in an ordinance that come towards or come forward to us at some later date. We're not making any decisions on legalizing or not legalizing marijuana. Mr. Penone.
Thank you, Mayor. I drew the short straw. I have to do this.
I don't think your mic is on.
Is it on?
Yeah, okay, no.
Okay. As you know, this matters before you because the electorate in California decided to approve Prop 64. And that leaves you with some decisions you have to make. The report is well thought out in terms of laying down a path for you to make those decisions. And so, what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about it a little bit and then try to keep it to the point where we're focusing on the decisions you have to make. And whether or not you're going to make any of those decisions tonight is up to you. Remembering that the context of this is if someone wants to grow six plants and wants to smoke marijuana, they can do that and you can't do any, there's no authority for you to do anything about that. If they're going to grow six plants indoors, you can't do anything about that. If you're going to grow six plants outdoors, you could regulate that. But we'll get into that. I just want to advise you of the context that you're working within, which is the state having approved marijuana through that initiative, but leaving to you the decisions as to what will be allowed in Lompoc. So, one thing I think contextually would be helpful is marijuana smoking is treated no differently in California than regular tobacco smoking. So, wherever regular tobacco smoking is prohibited, that's still prohibited in Lompoc, as well as in other places in the state. By state law, any public place, no one can smoke marijuana in any public place. You can't smoke marijuana in an enclosed place if it's a public place. Any place of employment, you can't smoke tobacco, so you can't smoke marijuana. If a property owner prohibits smoking, tobacco smoking, that property owner could also prohibit marijuana smoking. There's no smoking in any city recreational area by the city's rules unless there's a permit that's issued. Some of you were on the council when the council adopted a policy of permitting smoking in parks of the city, but only in certain areas where there are signs that say smoking is allowed. So, one thing you have to think about is if you don't want to allow marijuana smoking in parks, we may need to think about how to change that code requirement. You can't smoke within 1,000 feet of a school, so you can't smoke marijuana. And although you can smoke tobacco in a moving vehicle, you can't smoke marijuana in a moving vehicle. And that's all based on state law. That's nothing the city has done. So, basically, what we're looking at are different categories of uses of marijuana. There's personal use, there's commercial operations to help the medical use of marijuana. And then there's commercial operations for the new recreation, which was approved, which was allowed by Prop 64. Now, you have broad decision categories. Under personal use, as I said, you can't prohibit indoor cultivation, but you can regulate it. You can either choose to regulate outdoor cultivation or you could outright ban it. And then you can regulate use in terms of where it may be smoked, where, what may, what kinds of improvements you may want to see in a place that there's cultivation. But we'll get to those details later on. Continue with the broad decision categories on commercial operations for medical marijuana. You can regulate or ban it. If you ban it, then you don't need to go down the list of things that you may want to regulate about it. And you can either, you can ban all five of the uses of commercial, or the commercial operations of medical marijuana. You can ban some of those five, or you could just choose to regulate all of them. That's also true for the recreational use. Remembering on the use of medical, I should have said it before, use of medical, the state also allows people to use medical marijuana if they have a medical marijuana card. But you still have the ability to control and either ban or regulate dispensaries, cultivation, testing, manufacturing, delivery of both medical and recreational marijuana. So, I'm wondering if you want to, before we get to the next slide, I'm wondering if you want to first have a discussion about whether you want to consider banning anything that you can ban under the law. I'm not saying you have to. I'm just saying that that may be an option that you may want to choose because that will end up having different things occurred while we go down the list. Because if you banned it, then we don't need to go through the. to go through the discussion of regulating it. So I'm just offering that as an, as an option, if you want to have that discussion first and get public comment on that, or if you want to go through the whole list of all the options you have with the kinds of regulation you can have before you even make that first decision.
Well, my opinion is, if we, we're going to open up for public comment on each one of these items, I mean, just raise a hands. How many people want to speak on the marijuana issue? Okay, so if we have, I'm sure, it looks like about fifty people.
Go through the report.
I think so. But that's my opinion. Um, I'll leave it up to the council. What does the rest of the council feel? Go forward.
Okay.
Oh, one, one clarification. Um, marijuana, let's see, in, I just headed there. I'll think about it later for the question for you. Okay, go ahead.
Was, was it this slide?
It was that slide.
That's the medical?
Oh, yeah, well, regulations, city ordinances, even medical marijuana is not allowed in public parks and everything else. It's, you said smoking marijuana. It's medical marijuana and recreational marijuana in city buildings, city parks. Is that correct? The ordinance that's?
Medical marijuana can also not be smoked in those places, yes.
Okay.
So, um, these are the areas, as I said before, that, that we, you have the ability to, to regulate. Here's the list of things that you may want to consider if you want to regulate indoor cultivation of marijuana. Cultivation of marijuana indoors obviously needs some kind of light source, and those light sources can be, um, um, cause issues, both electrical issues and fire issues. So you may want to think about having, um, certain requirements that have to be met for lighting. Same thing with, same things with water, same things with water use limitations, odor control. You may want to do something to control that. Electrical, whether or not you want to require building permits, or whether or not the indoor cultivation that's being set would require any kinds of permits, whether you want to require a use permit for someone to have medic, uh, any kind of, uh, personal growth of six plants in order for you to be able to be sure there's only six plants or whatever, for whatever reason. But for, you can regulate that by requiring a use permit, and you can require inspections at the commencement of that operation. You could also require annual inspections to make sure that if whatever permits are issued are kept, uh, legal. You may want to consider some security requirements to be sure that there's secured, that the plant's secured both from, um, children or, or other things that you think may be of concern. You want to maybe have some restrictions on, on being able to make sure that there's not going to be access for anyone that's under, it's, uh, under twenty-one. You may want to require fees for processing the permits that will be issued. And you also can choose to require that if someone's going to be growing marijuana, that they need to have, and they're, and they're not the owner of the property, they need the landlord's permission to do that. On outdoor cultivation, some of the, be the same things that we, that I said before, but obviously, um, you may want to limit the number of plants and not have it be six, have it be less than six. You may want to require it, they be in a particular location, maybe closer to the center location of a piece of property rather than to a side, a, a side property line. And then the same issues that I said about for the indoor cultivation. You also may want to, um, be dealing with, or you may need to do something about if someone wants to, um, have the grow, um, have nighttime lighting in order to help enhance the grow, you may want to have some limitation on that. And then the other things that I said before for outdoor cultivation, or for indoor cultivation, applies to the outdoor cultivation too. So requiring the landlord approval and the other things. Personal use activities. Um, the first item here, the reason it's listed that way is because, um, currently, your municipal code only prohibits smoking in enclosed areas on city property and parks. Now, that's not such a big deal because the state law already prohibits it in those places that the city code allows tobacco smoking, which means that marijuana smoking can be allowed. But because of that inconsistency, I would, I would suggest to you that we modify the code so that we at least are consistent with the state law regarding the marijuana, the use of marijuana in public areas. You also may want to consider prohibiting marijuana from commu, uh, common areas in multifamily dwellings, you know, in, in lobbies, in outdoor areas of, uh, the common areas of multifamily dwellings. Again, you may want to control odor. You may want to be, uh, do something about controlling, uh, the flow of the smoke. Make sure that the smoking that's done is not going to cause the smoke to cross property lines and affect someone that doesn't want to have marijuana, marijuana smoking. And again, you could require landlord approval if the person doesn't own the property. Moving on to commercial operations, and this is for the medical, and again, it's going to be very similar, medical or, um, um, recreational. So there's different kinds of, uh, uses. There's dispensaries, meaning the places that some, the retail places where someone can go and buy the marijuana, um, to smoke, the edibles, whatever. Cultivation, obviously, that means the growing of them, the testing to make sure that the marijuana that's being processed is safe. Manufacturing, the manufacturing idea is those places that would take the marijuana and turn it into something else, like an edible or an oil or something like that. Then there's delivery. And as to delivery, I didn't say this earlier. As to delivery, you can regulate or, or prohibit or regulate those people that are delivering from Lompoc to somewhere else, or from somewhere else into Lompoc. But if someone's just driving through that happened to have marijuana, delivery, you can't do anything about that. And then, um, some of the things you may think about in terms of how you'd want to regulate dispensaries is how many do you want? Where do you want them located? How large could they be? Where would they be? Again, lighting use, water use, any kinds of permits that you may want to have, uh, require, or maybe they may require permits because of their, what they're going to be doing. Um, business tax certificates, as you know, they need a business license, a business tax certificate to pay their, to show that they paid their business tax. So that would be something that, um, you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily need to do anything to the code because this would likely fall into the regular retail use category, and so you wouldn't need to do anything. But unless you wanted to change the tax that they would have to pay. But in order to do that, you'd have to have a vote of the people to raise that tax. And then again, for dispensaries, use license, odor control, inspections when it starts, annual inspections. So you'll see a lot of similarity with the categories. It's just, I think it's, it's helpful to see all those categories applying to each one because they do. So moving on to cultivation, this is the commercial cultivation, not personal. You need to decide whether you would regulate and prohibit it, outdoor grows and only allow indoor grows or vice versa. Again, how many and where you, how they'd be allocated in term, if you, meaning if you choose to, um, limit it to three grows, we'll say, three cultivation places, how is it going to be, how is the three's going to be allocated? By a lottery, by some other system? How large the grows could be, where they can be, light usage, water use, again, the similarities with the others? And there's the rest of that list. Same. Testing. Again, the list is very redundant, but important. Again, you want to know how many you're going to allow and how you're going to allocate them, where you want them, how big they're going to be. That the, um, for the business tax here, it probably still would be able to fall under a category that already exists, but we'd have to review that and see. And if it didn't, and you wanted to have them have to be a business tax, then we would have to create a new, um, category. And if it's a brand-new category, we couldn't do that without having that go to the vote of the people because it'd be a new tax. Same categories? And then with manufacturing, again, manufacturing is, um, may, using, using the marijuana and creating edibles or oils and that kind of thing. But again, for the same reasons, it's the same list. And, and as to the business tax certificate on that one, it, maybe we could fit it into an existing manufacturing category, but we need to check. And then medical delivery. You need to decide whether you want to permit it from outside the city, permit it from inside the city. Again, tax certificate, we'll have to figure out what would apply. And then the same things, use permit, odor control, and the like. And maybe boring by now, but it's the same list. But those are all important categories to be thinking about. And then as we said with medical, the recreational cultivation, again, you may want to decide whether you want to have it just be indoors and outdoors. Maybe some of the things you may think about, or maybe the police department may want to give you input on that. Indoor may be easier to control security-wise than outdoors. And the thing to consider on the cultivation is because the state law, uh, considers cultivation as an agricultural use, we'll need to check the, if, if you want to regulate it, or even if you want to, well, if you want to ban it, that'd be an easy thing to do because we can structure a, an ordinance to do that. But if you want to regulate it, then we'll need to figure out where you'd want to have it. And if indeed, there's some agricultural uses that would permit it, that, that, there are agricultural uses that are permitted, we may need to change the zoning code, depending upon the zoning code language, if you want to prohibit marijuana grows in places where agri, where agricultural, um, uses already exist or are permitted. And then the testing. So you could either allow, um, businesses to open that can take the marijuana in to test and make sure that they're, it's safe and, um, appropriate. But it's the same list of things as to what you'd want to be able to, uh, create as, as regulations regarding that use. And the same with the manufacturing. And then again, delivery is just like the medical delivery. You can decide to allow it to occur from the outside into the city or not, and vice versa. Use licenses, odor control, security, same things. And then with regard to the taxation issues, um, both medical and, um, commercial marijuana uses, uh, or, um, businesses can be taxed. You can tax the retail sales. Now, you can't tax it as a sales tax, that's prohibited. Um, but you can tax the grocery receipts that are created by the business. And, um, some areas have used percentages of grocery receipts, just like your, um, business tax does. Cultivation, typically, it's done by acreage in terms of taxes for a certain amount of area. Manufacturer of edibles, again, is going to be on grocery receipts. Same with delivery services, and testing could be on grocery receipts, or the amount of, um, product they get in, some way of testing it. With regard to taxes, however, because, except for the, the business taxes, uh, under your current business tax certificate ordinance, any taxes that would be applied to marijuana would have to go to a vote of the people, um, because that's the law in California. One thing you may want to think about too, because taxes means money and the city getting the money, um, it's very difficult, in fact, I'm not aware of, many marijuana businesses that have checking accounts, um, or credit cards that they use for the business because the federal government prohibits marijuana. And so the banks that are federally funded don't want to get involved with it. Um, now, there are some credit unions that have been willing to take it on, but not a lot, not, not many. I mean, I don't know if there are credit unions in, um, Lompoc that have done that or would be willing to do that. But what cities have been finding is they need to, they need to have a special place set up in their city hall for the bags of mon, literally, I'm not kidding, for the bags of money that people come in to pay their taxes with, because they can't pay by check or credit card. So you have to have a way of figuring out how you're going to get that counted, where you're going to safely keep it, how people are going to feel comfortable carrying all that cash from their place to the city hall, how the city hall's going to be. I don't know if you're going to need a security guard on site every time, you know, one's coming. But anyway, that's, that's something that you, that will have to be considered in implementing whatever you do if you want to have, um, permit marijuana and then have taxes for it. And I think that was the last one. So my suggestion is, um, you ask me whatever question you want to ask me, obviously, you certainly can do that. And then after the public speak, maybe we go back to the beginning of the list, and then we can go page by page. I think that'd be the simplest way to get through this.
I agree. Now, real quick, Mr. City Attorney, the decision tree that you gave us is slightly different than in our agenda. It appears to be. Did everyone else notice that?
It is?
It was meant to mirror.
Yeah, I thought.
Okay, let me take another look, okay? Okay, just different order. Same, just different order.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And, and, um, you may want to have the fire chief and the police chief come up and make some comments before you open it to public.
Good. Fire chief, police chief?
Real quick before Joe leaves. Joe, I just have one question here, just, we don't do anything here. This law, say, comes into effect, what, January first or something?
Well, it's already in effect.
It's already in effect. So if we don't do anything, what is the state law? What happens at that point?
With, with regard to medical marijuana, it's clear that currently, any kind of medical marijuana operation is prohibited in Lompoc. That's absolutely clear, by the current code.
By the current city code?
By the current city's code, this current city code. So the state's not going to issue permits for operations of medical marijuana in Lompoc.
Okay.
With regard to most of the, um, most of the commercial, uh, recre, I'm sorry, most of the recreational aspects of marijuana, those also are prohibited. But there's some ambiguity. So if, 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 for example, you wanted to create some interim ban while you gave some more thought to it, I would recommend that we, we make it crystal clear that recreational marijuana, it currently is going to be illegal until you make the decisions you want. The only thing that you won't be able to do is, I mean, not able to do, even with the current, um, ordinances, someone could smoke marijuana in the place that they're allowed to, personally. They can grow six plants. If you don't do anything, they can grow six plants indoors or outdoors.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not this time, no. Police chief?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I will try to keep my comments brief.
I will try to keep my comments brief. Before I start, I just want to make it really clear that my comments aren't about legalization or not legalization. It's not about Prop 64 for me. I understand that we passed a law that allows people to grow six plants and to smoke marijuana in their personal home. That's not what I'm here about. I'm here about the commercialization of marijuana in Lompoc. And before I start, I'd like to say that my sources are scholarly and they're peer-reviewed, and these are two of the predominant sources I used. So... And for brevity, I'm going to talk mostly about Colorado today because I've been talking to Colorado police chiefs and police officers, and this one document on the right specifically talks about the impacts of marijuana on the state of Colorado. So... And I'm also going to speak to you from a perspective of a police chief and a police officer. So I'm going to talk about the things that are going to affect us that relate to my world. And crime rate has steadily been going up, and as the letter I wrote to you earlier in the ad hoc committee, violent crimes up 46% in Colorado and property crimes up 175%. And that doesn't include the gray market and the black market that is going on, or it doesn't include the cartel member stuff that's going on behind the scenes. As far as operators, motor vehicle operators, it's important to us here in California to be very cognizant of this because we don't have a method of testing marijuana. I mean, we could draw blood, or we could take a saliva swab, and it'll indicate that there's marijuana in the system, but it stays in your system for 12 to 14 days. So we're going to get our hat handed to us in court. And so there's no breathalyzer like we have for alcohol. And as you can see, it is going steadily up. It's in 2006, it was 7.8%, and in 2015, 24.7% of drivers tested positive for marijuana. Another way of looking at that, one of the byproducts of legalization of marijuana in Colorado is that alcohol use has gone up in Colorado. And it kind of makes sense. You're partying, you're smoking, you're drinking, you're eating, and so you have a lot of intoxication, both in the medical... In the... Not medical, in the marijuana realm as well as both. But what is interesting to me is that a third had marijuana only in Colorado, and that really concerns me. So there's a 77% increase in driving under the influence of drugs that involve marijuana, and there's a 40% increase in driving under the influence of drugs with just marijuana. And those were big increases since the legalization. Traffic deaths, obviously, this is a big concern in Colorado. In 2006, there was 37 deaths related to marijuana. In 2015, there was 115. And you kind of see the progression that's going in the wrong direction. Just this month, I've had three people in our town tell me that they can smoke marijuana and drive just fine. One of the gentlemen was so stoned, and I was face-to-face with him, telling him, "You cannot get in your car right now. You can't drive." He said, "You're not understanding, sir. I'm not drunk. I could drive stoned." And so we have another problem with legalization or smoking is we have an education piece that is huge, and I don't know how we're going to fix that here in Lompoc. Another way, this is the same chart, but it just shows the percentages. So again, we went from 6.9% to 21%, marijuana-related deaths. To me, those are big numbers. Talking about students in school and what they get in trouble for as it relates to marijuana, I won't go through every one of these bar charts, but it's kind of interesting to see that the big number, 29%, you're getting your marijuana as a kid from a friend that got it from a legal source. And then the next one is from a family member. And then the interesting one to me is 21% are getting it from their parents. Apparently, they have a... That's just, to me, that's interesting that a parent is going to let their teenager have marijuana, but that's just me. So marijuana ranks number one in marijuana usage amongst teens, and since legalization, the usage in... They do surveys. They say, you know, "In the last 30 days, have you smoked marijuana?", and the kids say yes or no. And that has gone up 79% since the legalization of marijuana in Colorado, and the national average has gone down in teens, 4%. Sorry if I'm going fast, I'm just trying to get through. So I had two of those, so... Next one, and you heard a couple of the doctors speak, hospitalization has increased 218% since 2000. It's gone from 2,541 to over 8,000, and there have been three overdose deaths on marijuana in... For the edibles. And you heard the young man that came up here and he talked about being responsible. Problem is, is a lot of people aren't responsible, and the edibles are extremely potent. You know, and somebody just burst out about alcohol. Alcohol is the number-one drug in America. I'll never go... You know, it's why I have a job, so I get it. Public consumption, as you can see, again, the numbers are going up. And what this is, is tickets that Denver police wrote. And the reason I put this slide up here is that I am really shorthanded, but we will have to write tickets because people aren't educated, and they're going to smoke their weed walking down the street, they're going to smoke in front of the school, they're going to do... And we're going to have to educate. That's what citations are for. And that's a big workload if you look at those big numbers. So, you know, some considerations, you know, to think about also for your police department and your fire department, we're going to have smoking in public calls, we're going to have outdoor grows that are going to get ripped. I come from Portland, Oregon. We're way ahead of the curve in California, and I was a narcotics officer. People are going to jump the fence and rip grows. We're going to have fights in people's backyards, we're going to have assaults in people's backyards. And I got to be honest with you, somebody rips your six plants, how do I investigate that? You know, if I catch the kid running down the street with a plant, I could do something, but once they're gone, they're gone. And how much energy do you expect your police department to spend on that kind of call? We're going to have takeover robberies. We've already had a couple in our town. We're going to have burglaries. We're going to have drunk driving with marijuana involved. We're going to have minors in possession. We're going to have minors under the influence. We're going to have neighbors who are going to complain about the smoke. We already are having that now. We're going to have, you know, people calling in, drivers who are intoxicated. We're going to have medical calls for service. We're going to have child endangerment calls. And we already have child endangerment calls. And what that is, is if you allow these six plants to be around a minor, you're endangering the child. And if you're... And if you have an indoor grow, you do have a 1,000-watt bulb. You have a 110 plug goes to a transformer. The transformer pumps that juice up to make that 1,000-watt bulb hot enough to mimic the sun. And you have a big aluminum hood over it so that the heat is radiated down. If you're a good grower, you're going to have Mylar all the way around on the walls, and that creates heat in that room. You're going to pump CO2 into the air to make the plants grow. You're going to spray your plants with bug spray to keep the aphids down. You're going to pump stuff into the soil to make the plants grow. You know, you're going to take a good care of those plants, but it's an issue when kids are in around the plants that are growing, around the electricity, the mold, the heat, fire... And the fire chief probably talked about that. So one of the things that I'm not even going to talk about it, but organized crime in Colorado, the United States Attorney's Office is handling four times the amount of organized crime that they were before legalization. And let's think about this. You're a cartel, half of your profit is marijuana. They'll be damned if they're going to let Americans take their profit. So they'll let you get set up, they're going to come in, and they're going to tap on your shoulder, or they're going to come in here and they're going to grow, and they're going to have a piece of this. They're not going to sit back and say, "Oh, gosh, darn it, they legalized it." They're not going to do that. And, you know, one of the issues... I'll leave it at that. So I'm worried about that. And, you know, think about Colorado. They have, what do they have, five and a half million people? We have 39, almost 39 and a half million people in California. We are the big tuna when it comes to marijuana. We are the big fish when it comes to any kind of drug. And so they are embedded in our community, the cartel. They have the West Coast, they have the whole country on lockdown, but they definitely have California on lockdown. I worry about that. And you know what? For them, the cartels, we are a small podunk town with a small podunk police department in their mind. They're going to find out differently if they come here, but that's their mindset. They are business people, and they're thinking about it. One of the other issues, I'll just show you Boulder. Boulder has the same thing with citations. The Colorado Bureau of Investigation's annual crime report indicates that homicide is up 15% since legalization, rape is up 11%, robbery is up 12%. And, you know, most people that smoke marijuana, they're... You know, and this isn't a moral judgment on my part, but the most people that use marijuana are good people, family people, and business people, I get that. But it doesn't just make you want to kick back on the couch and eat Doritos. There are some people that are affected differently by it. And I'll give you an example. Halloween 2015, Noah Hartman shot and killed a guy riding his bike in front of his house, a three-time veteran of war. And then he walked... Not the shooter, the guy on the bike. Then he walked down the street and killed two random people, two women sitting on their porch, for no reason. All he had was marijuana in his system. Now, did he have mental issues? I don't know. But it has... It can have an effect depending on how you take it and what strain you take. The potency of marijuana, back when we were kids, is probably 1% to 2% THC in Oregon. We were testing some of ours because it was extremely potent, and we were having people hallucinate. And we tested some strains that were 25% THC, and one guy had 30% THC, pretty phenomenal grower. So in conclusion, what I'll say is, we don't have a standard for drunk driving under the influence. We don't know what to do. As far as police officers, we can test our police officers, and we could teach our police officers to identify people under the influence of marijuana, but we don't have a way to test it, and we don't have a standard. You know, in Colorado, I think it's five nanograms or something like that. We haven't done that yet, so the carts were before the course. I already indicated we don't have a way to test it. We need to train our police officers, and Prop 64 allows a couple million dollars for CHP to train their folks, but doesn't, you know, give us money to train our folks, so I'm going to have to train my officers. And it costs about $3,500 to train an officer in drug recognition so that they can go and testify in court. And so if I had to do 25, 30 police officers, that's a lot of money. And then I have to backfill those police officers when they go to that training, and I think it's a minimum of 80 hours. So it's a lot of overtime. Blood tests cost about $25, $35 for alcohol, and it's going to cost about $200 to $300 to test, and I don't have that in my budget. And then I'll say that, you know, we have to be really careful if we normalize marijuana to our kids. And, you know, we have a big curve in teaching, and just a couple anecdotal things, medical marijuana centers in Colorado outnumber Starbucks, and recreational stores outnumber McDonald's. So the pro marijuana crowd has already created a superhero, Buddy, in Ohio, and they've... You know, if you remember Joe Camel, they got Buddy. And that's what my thing is. I don't want big marijuana to come into this town and create a situation where they need customers. And if they need customers, it's pure capitalism, then they need their kids. They're going to make edibles, they're going to make brownies, they're going to... They have to market to the kids because it's not about them and their little cronies, it's about customers. So I love this town. I hope we don't rush into this. I think we need to be extremely thoughtful. I came here three years ago, and I just don't want to see this town turned into something that we don't intend to do if we go with commercial marijuana.
Yeah. 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 If you want me to allow... Yeah, if you want me to allow the other side to be clapping and everything while they... I said I want some respect, so we have both sides speaking, okay? So please keep your applause to yourself. You have opportunity to come up here and speak to us. But remember, both sides have an opportunity to voice their opinion. I'm sorry, go ahead, chief.
Mayor, council members, everybody in the audience, my name's Mark Bray, acting fire chief for the city of Lompoc. Chief Walsh shared with me the same report that he got some of his information from, and while it was pretty police-centric, there was some... A couple stats I'd like to talk that came directly out of that. I think we can speculate what the consequences are of legalizing marijuana, but the report outlines some facts. One of the facts in there was marijuana-related traffic deaths increased 48% during the same period, all traffic deaths increased 11%. This is a pretty... This is a stat that jumps out at us. It impacts both police and fire for obvious reasons. The report... One thing the report doesn't discuss is deaths... It discusses deaths due to traffic collision, does not discuss traffic-related injuries. In a fatality traffic accident, we can have any number of additional patients that didn't pass away but still need medical attention. This creates additional strain on public safety personnel, ambulance service, and our local emergency room. The same study also discusses emergency department rates related to marijuana increased 49%. I think that was a graph that Chief Walsh put up on the screen. Again, this is an obvious impact to the local emergency rooms. The study does not discuss how many of these patients were treated by prehospital EMS providers, assuming that a certain percentage did receive prehospital EMS, emergency medical service. That percentage is a... Relates to a direct impact on fire and ambulance response capabilities. Another challenge is the health, fire, safety, and regulatory aspects of growhouses. These include chemicals, fertilizer, herbicides, pesticides, fungicides can all be present in growhouses, pressurized cylinders, carbon dioxide and propane are usually present, entanglement hazards from extension cords, irrigation tubes, and ventilation systems. Structural modifications include holes cut in the walls, floors, ceilings to accommodate growing operations, and electrical hazards due to lighting needs. One of these homes can consume up to 20 times the average household electric amounts. Electrical equipment can be poorly wired and home circuits overloaded, leading to potential shock and fire ignition. Great concern to fire personnel are bypass electrical meters. A lot of these growhouses will bypass the meters so they don't raise any suspicion when they're at the amount of electricity they're using, and that can cause a direct effect to us when we go to a fire there. We shut off the utilities, we think the utilities are shut down, and they're still live. Inspection or regulation of these aspects would be very difficult with our current staffing models. In an effort to gather additional information, I reached out to Denver Fire Department. I was put in touch with Mike Stutz from the Fire Prevention Division. I wanted to get a feel for some of the challenges Denver had to go through. The stats he shared for calendar years 2014, 15, and 16 included marijuana-related fires, they had nine in 14, six in 15, and nine in 16. Marijuana-related rescue and emergency medical calls, 527 in 14, 495 in 15, and 357 in 16. Marijuana-related inspections, 722 in 14, 1,394 in 15, 1,769 in 16. And marijuana permits issued, 634 in 14, 1,415 in 15, and 1,496 in 16. The inspection permit and regulation of growhouses created such a workload that the Denver Fire Department now has a total of five inspectors who solely dedicated to marijuana growhouses. So in conclusion, Lompoc has already had two honey oil production fires, one resulting in an injury to a firefighter, and the second resulting in an injury to the person producing the honey oil. Both caused extensive damage to the structures. Honey oil production is a primary use for leftover leaves and stems. One would have to make the connection that an increase in growhouses would lead to an increase in honey oil production. The amount of revenue the city will generate is a moving target. A few numbers have been discussed and may be presented tonight. Even with the higher amounts presented, will not cover the increase in service level that will be required from all city services to regulate and force and respond to growhouse incidents. Available for questions if you have any questions.
Any questions for either chief?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We're going to open this up for public comment. Now, when I asked before how many people wanted to speak, about 50 of you raised your hands. We have approximately two and a half hours left in this meeting, and we still have other agenda items. So I'm going to restrict the comments to two minutes. And if you want, just start lining up to save some time, just line up here. Let three or four people up there at a time, and as it gets down, just come up so we don't have a lot of time wasted having people come up to this podium. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Deb Andrews, Mission Hills area of Lompoc. The...
The testimony from the doctors, fire chief, and police chief was very, very sobering. In addition, I'm concerned how the cultivation of marijuana will affect traditional crops. Marijuana cultivation has caused problems for the established agricultural industry in Colorado. Over decades, farmers and researchers have worked diligently to determine what seeds to use, what chemicals and fertilizers to use or not use. Marijuana cultivation does not have the benefit of that research and experience. Colorado farmers' crops have been adversely impacted by practices used by marijuana growers. Agriculture is a large part of our economy. We should not be, we should be very cautious about opening a path forward that might endanger our established farms and wineries. Many concerns have been expressed about the potential abuse of marijuana. If we addressed our widespread reading failure, perhaps we would see a reduction in the abuse of alcohol and all types of addictive drugs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lingel, city council. My name is Rob Trailer and I'm a Lompoc resident. Over the past several months in the course of my business, I've heard from individuals, business owners, and investors interested in nearly every aspect of commercial cannabis operations, cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, retail, and lounges. And the further we get down the road, the more frequently I'm contacted. I would suggest the fact they're contacting me says a number of things. People want this business, they wanna turn the engine on, the economic engine on, they, but they recognize the potential pitfalls. They wanna do it right, and they wanna be compliant with all applicable laws. It's evidence this won't be the Wild West. It's evidence these are business people making business decisions, and they wanna get out in front of the state's licensing process, at least as far as it's prudent. And they wanna be able to hit the ground running. More importantly, it's evidence they wanna invest in Lompoc, and they see the potential, and they want Lompoc to grow. But make no mistake, time is of the essence. Lompoc is a potential market for cannabis, but it certainly isn't the only option. There's a statewide market for business and investors, and other cities are courting this industry. If our city doesn't take this opportunity to welcome these businesses, then they're gonna go elsewhere. They're gonna take their dollars and they're gonna move to a city where it makes more financial sense to grow their business. And as I've mentioned previously here, one of the top concerns raised at the most recent economic vitality forum is the need for a business-friendly environment in Lompoc. We have the opportunity to develop a new industry in Lompoc, and all the city needs to do is take an approach with the same business sense as those looking to invest. Business needs certainty. This, give this industry the certainty it needs to implement their plan here and sooner rather than later. So as you consider your direction to staff on drafting reasonable regulations, please ensure they keep in mind that monies this city spends defending legal challenges to heavy-handed regulations simply means the less time and money we have to actually do something productive. Again, time is of the essence. Please don't let fear stand in the way of progress, and don't let the pursuit of perfection get in the way of good enough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, council. I'm here to advocate for the disabled and the mentally ill. I'm mentally ill, and I treat my mental illness with medicinal cannabis, and it makes it so that I can have more of a normal life and function better than I can without it. And I do it in lieu of, of a lot of heavy-duty psychoactive drugs that would be given by a psychiatrist. They have horrible side effects, they make your hair fall out, they make you gain weight, they make you have diabetes. They're really bad drugs. And medicinal cannabis really helps people that way. And the thing that I wanted to talk about with the disabled is that the disabled oftentimes can't get around. They don't drive, they don't go very far away from their house. And to have delivery services and local dispensaries to give medicinal marijuana to them would be, I think, a really good thing to help out the disabled of our community. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about is that with growing outside, six plants, they're not that big. I mean, they're, they're, it's not that big of a deal. And Lompoc is really windy, and there's not much odor from growing plants outside. It's hard for, I've been growing for years, and I grow like four plants at a time every year, and none of my neighbors have ever figured it out. Nobody knows, nobody cares. And, you know, it's not like my neighbors are all, "Oh, my God, I can smell the plants growing." You know? It's, it's really just a small thing that people should be able to do in their homes. So especially people who can't afford to buy it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Camille Miele-Green. I live in Lompoc, California, and I'm a medical marijuana patient. When I was born, I was diagnosed with sickle cell anemia, a genetic blood disorder. When I was nineteen, I was diagnosed with endometriosis, a reproductive health disorder. Both of these diseases cause immense amounts of pain that impact my quality of life, and both diseases have no known reliable cure or treatment. When I was growing up, I watched my mother, a registered nurse, struggle with opioid addiction after injuring her back at work. When I was fourteen, she passed away. This left me in a tough situation. I needed pain management, but I was terrified of using prescription pain medication. At eighteen, I could not cope with the constant pain and entered a pain management plan which relied heavily on opiates. Opiates work well for pain short-term but aren't widely reasonable for independent long-term pain relief. I had never thought of using marijuana for pain management. In fact, I was very closed off to the idea. It was a drug, after all, the idea of marijuana for pain, it seemed like a joke to me. Six months ago, at the end of my rope, I was desperate. After surgeries, spinal injections, intense rounds of treatments, blood transfusions, and countless pain medication refills, I finally decided to try illegal medical marijuana. First in the form of topically applied CBD. It was so effective, I tried medical edible THC, which proved to be a powerful painkiller. For someone who was reluctant to try marijuana, please believe me when I say, it is an effective and versatile medicine. When my pain is so bad, I throw up marijuana helps that too, whereas opiates would make me more nauseous. Right now, our country and state is facing a severe opioid epidemic, which is very important to me. We must find a way to treat people in severe pain compassionately while fighting the opioid epidemic head-on. Abandoning pain patients because of this crisis is not an acceptable answer. To ignore the solution in front of us out of fear and misconception will be unwise. I am confident access to recreational marijuana will be beneficial to our entire community. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Denny Overton, and I'm a Lompoc resident. It's no secret that many in my generation smoked pot, and many like me put it behind them when it came to being responsible grown-ups, raising families, and having careers. For me, it was not worth breaking the law or risking my family, so it became a thing of the past. And on that note, I did not find it to be addictive in any way. I enjoyed it for recreational use, but I stopped for the greater good of my family. Until recently, I was probably of the same opinion as many of those who are opposed. I did not recognize that there were legitimate health benefits, and I really wanted nothing to do with it. To be honest, my perception of people who used cannabis was that it was detrimental to them being productive and successful in life. In my own nutritional therapy practice, I read and researched various client health issues. When I began seeing many research articles regarding medical cannabis, I made the decision to become better informed on the subject. These studies are available for anyone to read and learn, as I have, and they show cannabis to be instrumental in successfully treating a wide variety of health conditions such as cancer, seizures, arthritis, chronic pain, migraines, Parkinson's, fibromyalgia, and many, many others. How can one plant be helpful for so many diverse health conditions? Without getting too sciency, it is because the human body has an endocannabinoid system, or ECS, a collection of cell receptors which are throughout the body. Cannabis has the ability to heal a wide variety of seemingly unrelated conditions because they're all related in part by the ECS. The medical implications of this finding are endless. In my own family, I have seen cancer in remission through the use of cannabis, as well as working successful, successfully for things like insomnia and chronic pain. Mr. Mayor and council members, I urge you to recognize that used properly, cannabis is a lifesaver and a life giver, and those who can be helped by using cannabis should not have to break the law to be able to grow, purchase, and use these products for their health. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mayor, council, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Rick Barreras. I've lived here for forty-three years. Thirty of those years I've used cannabis. I wanted to kinda dispel a myth that I heard that talked about earlier, I won't say who. The first bag of pot I bought was at Lompoc Valley Middle School when I was thirteen years old. I kept buying through high school and beyond. It's, it's out there already. It's not tacked, it's not regulated. Your children are being targeted. What we want you to do is regulate it. That's it. It's easy, it's simple. Just, you know, do your job like you do with alcohol, cigarettes, and whatever else. It's fine. But if we don't do anything, or if we don't allow it, or if we ban it, all you're doing is letting them come through the back door, just like they always have been. I can go within a mile of this place and find ten dealers, you know, that were right next to the police station. They obviously don't have a rap on it. And I also wanted to say that when we talk about cannabis in Colorado or anywhere else, we're talking about cannabis post-prohibition. It's a lot different than just, "Oh, cannabis is bad now." You know, when, when alcohol was in prohibition and it came off of prohibition, deaths went up, crime went up, theft went up. It's, it's part of the progression. It is now legal in California. We need to deal with it, not skirt it under the rug and, you know, bare our heads in the sand. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Honorable councilmen and women and city staff, I thank you for your service to our community and this opportunity to speak. I speak on behalf of my God and Savior, Jesus Christ, who died and rose from the dead, my church, Lompoc Valley Baptist Church, and my family. I understand that marijuana has its medical applications. I also understand that facilitating and commercializing it for recreational use may be profitable for our city. It, it certainly has its gains, but the losses are so much weightier. If the laundry list of procedures and regulations that we just saw is not enough to deter us and the manpower and the finances needed to regulate it, I don't know how you regulate that, how you would. You know, if that doesn't deter you, consider the losses, and some of that will be found in the report that the chief gave, and that's an increase in non-traffic and traffic-related fatalities, increase in criminal activity, and increase in children that are rendered fatherless and motherless, either because their parents overdosed or because parents became addicted and therefore unfit to raise their children. It breaks my heart when I see our youth pursuing these controlled substances to ease their pain or for them to escape the harsh reality of their lives. As it stands, marijuana's use is somewhat limited, and yet young people are getting a hold of it. And now we're considering opening the floodgates and making it even more available. Even if we had tighter regulations, the fact still remains that the availability will now be increased because we're opening a door for it. Please, I beg you to consider the future of our young people, what kind of Lompoc our children and your grandchildren will inherit. You know, consider the lives that will be lost, and even if it was only one life that is lost, it is still worth, it is still not worth any money or any, anything we can to gain from it. Every one of us can agree that there are some things that are invaluable, and there are some things that should not be negotiable, and that those things are people's lives, our homes, our futures, and the legacy we leave for our young people who come behind us. As dear, as our elected officials, we trust you with our lives, we trust you with our future, and I beg you on the behalf of our church, of our young people, of our citizens, please do not open the door to the commercialization of marijuana, even though our state has already legalized it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The two chiefs had pretty scary statistics up there. It's already legal in California, so regulating it in the city of Lompoc is not gonna do anything to change those stats. It's already here, it's already legal. The city council should at least consider regulating it and, and inspecting the grow rooms so they're safe. And we need to, you know, get the grow rooms going and regulate a little bit, 'cause it's already here. They can't stop it. You know, state says we can use it. So, those stats aren't gonna change. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name's Tyne Camfield, I'm a Lompoc resident. I've been here for about three years. I come here and speak pretty often. I've spoken about marijuana and for these meetings and at the ad hoc committee. And one thing that isn't really brought up very much is the voters. The voters have voted, they've passed this. Three of you guys were re-elected during the same election by those very same voters, and your job is to represent your constituents. So we can sit here for days talking about why we personally want it or don't want it, whether we want to invest, whether we wanna use, or whether we're completely against it. But ultimately, your job is to represent the people who came to the polls and voted. I think it's time, we need to regulate it and tax it, but not over-regulate it. So that's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Donnie Boominglegg. I'm a former narcotics agent, or narcotics officer here for the city of Lompoc. I worked here for about half a decade in that unit. I'm real aware of the issues that affect the city. But I'd like, the reason why I came down here, I wasn't planning on coming down here, I was on a road trip, and I'll try to keep it as short as I can, but the things that I heard were completely appalling. I heard that three people died of cannabis edibles, which is absolutely impossible, all right? The LD-50 for cannabis is fifteen-hundred pounds that must be inhaled or ingested within fifteen minutes. It's physically impossible. Nobody's ever died of cannabis, nobody ever will die of cannabis. I've sat and watched a police chief tell people that if, if children and minors were within a few feet of these six plants that people were gonna have in their backyard, that they would somehow be, somehow be charged with child endangerment possibly. There's a process of decarboxylation which happens to occur when you use cannabis. Cannabis must be heated to a hundred-and-eighty degrees before it can ever have any psychoactive effect. THC has to be converted to THCA in order for your body to work and ingest it. A child can eat as much as he can of it, and it would never affect them whatsoever. All right? These NIDA studies that we're talking about, these NIDA studies refer to intoxication levels that were taken by blood metabolites. Blood metabolites do not have anything to do with field sobriety. We must become informed on this. I know only have twenty-seven seconds, but the internet is very, very useful. You can look at it for other things besides YouTube, all right? These things that we are asking, you know, that we're, that we're trying to, to implement, we need to recognize them for what they are. These tickets can then become warrants, and they become a loss of your freedom over a benign plant that's never hurt anybody, killed anybody, and will never hurt anybody. I'm a veteran, and I'm a, I'm a former ranger, and I expect that when the, when the state and our constituents vote for something, that we get to use those rights as free Americans. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Scott Snyder, and I grew up in this town, and after, I too am a veteran. After nine years in the Navy, I moved my family back because we love this town. Two and a half years ago, I was involved in a pretty serious car accident on the, the intersection of V and Central. The gentleman that caused that accident was high. Was he high on marijuana? I don't know the answer to that, but he was high because he was arrested. You know, we've heard, I've heard tonight a lot of discussion on the pain uses for marijuana. I too suffer with pain daily with a fifty-hour-a-week job. I don't know any of your personal circumstances. I don't claim to. I can only tell you what I do. I pray, I trust God, and I go to work. That's what I do. We, we don't need to add another dog to the fight. We talked about opioids. I don't agree with those as, as well, but we don't need to add another dog to this fight. I'm trusting you as the council to make a decision not based on financial gain or the popular vote, but by what is right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Brian Cole, resident, mayor, city council. I'd like to thank everybody for bearing with all of this. This has been going on for years and years and years, and of course cannabis predates cotton, as a matter of fact, as also a viable alternative as an agricultural product. I don't know if anybody's aware of that, but it's actually a superior product in that regard. We're here discussing, of course, really? I was very sure. I don't have a lot to say anyhow, but I'm just saying that, you know, we're all thinking about medicinal drug, the word drug is an awful word to use, I think, in regard to that. It is a medicine, can be used as medicine, has been used for medicine for many, many, many years, and also as fabric. It is also used in, in solidified products that are used in automobiles to this very day. So this is a plant that has a multitude of uses that we can, we have just begun to tap what the possibilities are for. I absolutely support the regulation because we're running into a conundrum here, especially with the handling of the cash on a national of the cash on a national basis. Of course, this has created, this has created huge crime problems, in my opinion, because of the fact that no banks are allowed through FIDC, FDIC, and these other people to handle the large amounts of cash, which these people that are growing legitimately and following all state laws and all that they possibly can do are being potentially robbed. The handling of large sums of cash encourages their, their even employees to rob. And this would be a way to alleviate that, as was with alcohol many, many years ago. And I certainly hope that we've all learned something from, from that era. I know that I did. And I don't, I don't advocate for the young people's use of that, absolutely not. I don't advocate for anybody using anything that they don't want to, or that's dangerous, driving on the road, inebriated, whether it's alcohol, marijuana, whatever. I mean, we have to be thinking educated people, and I think that the multitude of constituency these days is much better educated because of the internet, if you just take the time. If you listen to somebody who's just putting the word out there that this is bad, this is one more drug that we have to deal with, that's just a minuscule part of the picture, minuscule part of the picture. You're talking about prescription medication addictions that can be helped by this very same drug. That's all I got to say, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Richard Smith. I'm a resident and business owner here in Lompoke. I was actually born and raised here. And thank you for letting me speak, council and mayor. I just wanted to say a couple of things regarding correlation does not equal causation, as, you know, the point tried, that was trying to be made by our police chief. In those statistics, I mean, you would assume, if you have any data science, or if you're a data scientist or have any background statistics, that you would see, you would expect an increase in people who would test positive for cannabis if they're taking blood tests in Colorado that had legalized cannabis and made it legal for recreational use as well as medical use. You're going to see numbers like that rise, but correlation does not equal causation. Just because you have cannabis in your system does not mean that's the reason why you got in a car accident. You could have had cannabis in your system because you used it the day before to treat whatever pain you were dealing with, or whatever reason you decided to use it. You could have used it that morning and been perfectly sober to drive. So it's important to look, you know, between the line, or read between the lines with statistics like that, because all they're doing is promoting reefer madness and propaganda and lies that have been told to our country since the thirties, because cannabis was associated with, you know, people of minorities and lower-income folks. And so they were demonized because it was easy to point out and use cannabis as the reason why people rape women and steal and commit crimes. It's just a propaganda tool. And, you know, I, I'm completely against drugs. I think we have a major problem with opioids and meth in this town that we don't have a handle on. Not at all. We have the cartel in this town selling drugs and creating drug dealers. But, you know, we have regulations with opioids and methamphetamines, you know, because a lot of our kids are on these ADHD drugs, and so they're already getting doped up when they're in elementary school. You know, we have much bigger problems than this. And, uh, thank you very much. I just wanted to, that was my point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Pastor Jeffrey Nelson from Peace Lutheran Church. Mayor and council members, Pastor Punter, in her invocation, called for concerns for those who do not have a voice. I'd like to speak tonight on their behalf about the impact of legalization of recreational marijuana will have on the young people of Lompoke, based on information gathered from Colorado and Washington by such agencies as the Columbia University Mailman School of Public Health and the National Institute on Drug Abuse. In the state of Washington, legalization of recreational marijuana use significantly reduced perceptions of marijuana's harmfulness by fourteen and sixteen percent among eighth graders and tenth graders, respectively, and increased their previous month marijuana use by two and four percent. Drug-related suspensions and expulsions in Colorado increased forty percent from the school years ending two thousand nine to two thousand fourteen. And the vast majority of these suspensions were marijuana violations. There's considerable evidence that suggests that a student, that students who smoke marijuana have poorer educational outcomes than their nonsmoking peers. Marijuana use in adolescents is associated with altered brain development, a decline in cognitive function, and poor academic performance. There's much more about this, but we have a responsibility to work to ensure positive and productive futures for the children of our community. Some might argue that since recreational marijuana will be sold only to adults, there's no impact on our children. Let me point out that one out of every three Santa Barbara school eleventh graders reports drinking on a regular basis, and alcohol is not available to anyone under the age of twenty-one. We already have four alcohol and drug treatment centers for teens in Lompoke. I understand there's a financial benefit, but there also is a concern for the young people of our community, and I ask you to keep that in mind as you make this decision.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Marty Collins. I'm a resident in Lompoke for the last eleven years. I'm just your average Joe here. It seems to me that you have a hard, hard road ahead of you. I wish you luck. I think that it's important that we understood what happens if nothing happens tonight. I would say that the best thing that you could do initially is to set things on an even path as far as to regulate what you can, because yes, we passed a law. It is legal in the state, but they, those same laws give you the options to control it in our community. And Lompoke is a little small bedroom community. It's not Montecito. It's not going to be the rich people coming here, spending a lot of money, great tax revenues. And I don't know if we're large enough to be able to absorb the impact of the different commercial institutions, and I know your staff is going to be looking at that. But I would recommend, for the purpose for tonight, is to step back and control what you can, because this is a big deal. You see a lot of people out here, a lot of people that have passions. I also had a seventeen-year-old son that had cancer, and I know fully well the adverse effects of chemotherapy. And I understand there is some need for medicinal marijuana, but that is prescribed, and I think that's something you should look at, is splitting that out, because a lot of times people like to use the medicinal aspect to try to get in the door. But I'd also say, if you could regulate the, the aspects of the odor and the smell in the community, we have those problems. The police chief already mentioned it, as I do with my neighbors. I wish you luck. I know it's a hard thing to do. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Lompoke people. Sorry, I'm going to try and make some sense of everything. I had something written down, but I'm going to address a few things that have been talked on today. My name is Crystal Reyes. I'm a disabled veteran. I'm also a medical cannabis user, and I have been for quite a few years. I'm not going to discuss how it's helped me. I'm going to touch on a few things. One, we are not discussing recreational use here. In, it's adult use. It's the Adult Use Act. Nowhere in the sixty-four pages of Prop 64 is the word recreational use. In Lompoke, we have twelve-plus bars, twenty-plus wine tasting rooms, six-plus liquor stores. Those are not counting the grocery stores or restaurants. Since we met last month, SB ninety-four has been adopted. What SB ninety-four does is it repeals MRSA, MCRSA, and puts the adult use and the medical regulations as one. In response to the police chief and the fire chief, I respect what you both do immensely. However, to compare Lompoke with forty-three thousand people to Denver with a population of almost seven hundred thousand people is absurd. Why not compare us to Parker, Commerce City, or Littleton? The opioid, opioid use has dropped so dramatically since the use of cannabis has been introduced. The amount of children that it's helped, Zacky Jackson, five years old, over five hundred thousand seizures. Calvin Lockwood, teenager with autism, couldn't speak, repeatedly hit his own legs, would bite himself until he broke the skin, couldn't sleep and couldn't communicate. After cannabis oil, he could sleep. He quit abusing himself, and he's able to communicate. So I appreciate everything that you guys have done. I know that this is not an easy road, and you have a lot to take into consideration. But I urge you to, with proper regulations, you take the black market out of the hands of the cartel.
Thank you, ma'am.
Honorable mayor, council members, city staff, citizens of Lompoke, and members of the Cannabis Coalition, today, we teeter on the heels of history in Lompoke as we discuss cannabis legalization. As you know, and as everyone knows, fifty-seven point six percent of Lompoke voters went to the polls on November eighth, and they voted yes for Proposition Sixty-four. And in that vote, not only did they authorize, voters authorized people to grow cannabis in their homes, to smoke cannabis for commercial businesses, but they also authorized taxes to be collected. These taxes can bring about a new era in Lompoke. Tonight is the first night where you speak about the most important decision that you will make this century. Lompoke has once again the opportunity to reclaim the title of being the Valley of Flowers. Not only will the cannabis industry be projected to be the number-one industry in California, it will bring in over one billion dollars in taxes. It will increase the people's income as they have better jobs, as they have benefits, and as they are lifted up as a society as a whole. We have heard tonight that cannabis is dangerous. We have heard that cannabis is detrimental to society. I ask those opponents to produce the documentation to prove those claims. We have a police chief who has given us statistics respectfully that automobile accidents have increased. We know that Colorado has legalized cannabis. You're going to test positive. It's in your system for over thirty days. It does not prove that you are under the intoxication of marijuana, or that marijuana caused those accidents. Please take the numbers which I have presented to you, in addition to those who have voted, and honor those votes tonight. Fifty-seven point six percent of Lompoke has voted yes.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Fred Cap. I'm a longtime patient and advocate. I thought last year when sixty-two percent of Santa Barbara County came out and voted for sixty-four that I could throw away this T-shirt. But I kind of do feel like a criminal tonight here, and I'm hearing a lot of erroneous information. And if you might want to check, there's an organization called LEAP, Law Enforcement Against Prohibition. And you might want to check out, you know, because we're hearing a lot of erroneous statistics and facts, and the only person that has ever died from cannabis, I believe they had a thousand tons fall on them. That's the only person that's ever died. And, you know, it's, it's really sad. I believe that people have spoken. I'm not going to get into arguments. I know I'm not going to change people's minds. But, you know, if, if, if this could improve the quality of a loved one, if you had a loved one that was sick or dying, or any way that this could improve the quality of their life, would you deny it to them? You know, the fact is, they're actually using cannabis in opiate treatment and withdrawal. There are five-year-old kids that are on CB, non-psychoactive cannabinoids. So this is a, a thing that's helping a lot of people. But I believe we've spoken on this issue, and the cat is out of the bag. The barn door is open, and it's, it's up to you. And you seem like a very wise and smart council. I've been before the Santa Barbara city and, and the county before. It's my first time in Lompoke, and I see a lot of adverse reaction here and a lot of negativity. And also to the fire chief as far as honey oil, they had the California fire chiefs said if it was a proper laboratory setup, in a manufacturing setup, that it's totally safe. So let's not, you know, scare people with a lot of these fake statistics and facts. Let's, let's get with, you know, a little reality and the fact that it, this is improving a lot of people's quality of lives, and that's why we're here tonight. And people are spending several hours of their time. I'm hungry, but we're, we're all here, and we all feel very passionately about this one way or the other, and I respect everyone's opinion as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is Stormy Cummings. I have lived in Santa Barbara County on and off for about thirty years now. I say on and off because I have traveled the state, being in the cannabis industry. I've been to Humboldt. I've been to Mendocino. I've also gone down south. I see the impact on different communities. I bring that up as well because I did move to Denver for about a couple of years. It was in two thousand nine. I was part of a subcommittee that helped draft the ninety-nine-page rules for medical. And regulation is not going to be easy. I am here to let you know, there are people like me who are very educated and knowledgeable about the cannabis industry, who can help you with the regulations if you choose. We are here to answer questions you might have. And where am I going for it? You're not alone. Like I said, it's not going to be easy. I know you have questions. There's a lot of fear mongering here tonight that I actually can't believe, but we're here to give you facts, to let you know, you know, where these growers are, how they do operate, or how dispensaries operate, you know, the variety of things that you are facing. So I do want to let you know that in your community, there are people here to answer questions if you want to reach out to us.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Kathy Dale, and I just want to read a headline to you that happened today. Two Northern California deputies shot and wounded, with a suspect described as a disgruntled member of a church that identifies on social media as a sect of the marijuana-embracing religion. I have a family member who is on the police force here in Lompoke, and I don't want to see this headline with my family member being one of the wounded people.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Sarah Boominglag. I was employed with the city of Lompoke for almost a decade as a firefighter here. And again, I wasn't prepared. We just came back from vacation, wasn't prepared to speak today. But I am completely, completely, and utterly appalled by the fact of the fear monging that we're sending off to the public here. It is extremely disturbing, not based on actual facts, not based on evidence. When you deal with the police department, the fire department, you deal with evidence. And to me, it is absolutely appalling that as a mother, I'm told by our highest-ranking officer that six plants is child endangerment, without any comprehension of what it would actually take, what you have to heat it to. Hemp is the most nutritious possible element, most easiest to grow, to cultivate. And for that to actually spew out of the mouth of our highest official in the city is very, very disturbing. Within the decade that I worked for the city of Lompoke, I ran the total number of medical calls, total number of possible overdoses due to cannabis or medical marijuana is absolutely zero, zero in the decade that I worked for the city of Lompoke as a firefighter. And again, I implore you, please, I know everyone is entitled to their opinion. Have your opinion, that's fine, but base this on factual evidence, not fear monging, because this is absurd, that this is the direction we are going to take as a city and by our highest-ranking officials. With that badge, with that title, it is an honor, but it also is a duty. So please, educate yourself. In this day and age, ignorance is a choice. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Just like to say, I really appreciate what a lot of you are doing, just waving your hands. It's much more, much less distracting. So thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah.
Ray Leslie, Lompoke. The reason I'm here, I've talked to a lot of people over the years that was using marijuana to try and help them with different type of illnesses and things like that. A lot of them, I worked with the military for about thirty years or more, and a lot of them had come out of the military and stuff, and they found out about it, and they were actually getting some of it legal at the time. were actually getting some of it legal at the time and everything, and it was helping them with different types of things with their thoughts and what goes on. I don't use it, I never have, but I talk to a lot of people that do. And it's all medical stuff, it's not for recreation. And that's why I'm here, and I actually went down and applied to open up a store, to see if we could get something going a while back. I've got the perfect building because it's all solid concrete. But most of the stuff, from what I understand, is grown indoors. And most of the marijuana you can buy from Northern California, very cheap, and make it so you don't even grow it and sit here. There's a lot of different ways to go about it, it's not just a give-and-take thing where you just go, okay, I can do this, you know? But I think you could buy a lot of it, not even have the growers here, or you can do it here, but I think for the people that need it, I think we would be doing them a big favor. And the revenue off this, I understand, is outrageous. Maybe you could get your budget back on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I don't have a flip, is that okay? I just wanted to speak to a few points. One of them is what I just heard about the latest headline. There's a saying in the media industry, if it bleeds, it leads. These kinds of sensational stories you're going to hear with whatever issue is currently being discussed in any community, and that's certainly, I think, what was going on with that article. Of course, no one is happy when someone loses a life, it is a tragedy. But that's not really what we're discussing. I think we're all opposed to people being harmed. I want to say that I've disagreed with Chief Pat Walsh on issues before, but it's important to remain civil. And I hear a lot of the pro-marijuana movement sort of painting Pat as a bad guy, and that's certainly not how I see it. He's got a job to do, he has a group to represent, and he's doing a great job of that. There is also a huge industry, the prison industry, makes a lot of money. They can use data in whatever way they see fit, as anybody would do in any industry to help their industry. And I think that's the disagreement we're really having. We don't agree that that was representational of the facts. For example, what we really should be looking in that data is, did accidents and these harmful incidents increase wildly in those years, or was it steady with population increase and other factors? That's what some of you were talking about, and that is certainly true. I myself am a business owner here in Lompoc. I own Certain Sparks Music downtown Lompoc, and have been involved in beautifying Old Town Lompoc with my neighbors down there. And I work with kids daily, about half of our clientele, our music lessons, who are youth. I worry about those kids a great deal. I interact with them, and we talk, besides playing guitar, about things that are going on in their lives. And while I worry about them a lot, I can say that I am not worried about their interaction with marijuana. That is not the major issue. There are major things happening in our community, and that's not something that I personally fear. I wanted to close by saying, as we look at some of these lists, I think the city certainly sees cost when they see those lists, people are already strapped. But I want to remind you that maybe the bags of money that were mentioned by the city attorney could be used to pay for those costs. That is a simple fact. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Paul Kowalski. I'm the chairman of the Cannabis Business Council of Santa Barbara County and president of FPO Bio Incorporated, a medical marijuana collective. We have members and employees who live in the city of Lompoc. For decades, our federal government and supporters of marijuana prohibition have let people to believe that marijuana is so dangerous it should be illegal at any cost. They have exaggerated the potential for harm, spread myths about its impact on society, and even spent hundreds of millions of tax dollars on TV ads. The city council's goal should be to have regulations which encourage legitimate and responsible businesses to comply with the city's ordinances. Any type of artificial restrictions or barriers to entry that limit the availability of permits or lottery is simply going to encourage the black market. The free market should be used to determine how many businesses can exist. In a city with a wine trail, a wine ghetto, a wine alley, and no restrictions on the number of alcohol businesses, you should not arbitrarily discriminate against cannabis. Most Americans would agree, I'm sorry, consuming marijuana is simply something that some adults choose to do instead of consuming alcohol, and for good reason. Marijuana is less toxic than alcohol, less addictive, less harmful to the body, and less likely to contribute to violent or reckless behavior. Recently, the National Institute of Health released a study showing that medical marijuana reduced mortality and opioid overdose rates. The University of Southern California, San Diego, found hospitalization rates of people suffering from painkiller abuse and addiction dropped on average twenty-three percent in states that offered medical marijuana. Opioid overdose cases at hospitals in states with legal marijuana dropped by an average of thirteen percent. With the state regulating marijuana, I hope Lompoc will adopt a sensible and open marijuana policy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
I don't have a number of prepared remarks. One of the things, as I sat and listened, that occurred to me is the majority, if not all, of the people who spoke in favor of the lack of restriction here in Lompoc are people who have some personal interest in it, either as a business, or in medical reasons, or recreational reasons for themselves. And that's fine. I'm expecting that this council and mayor, that you're doing what's best for Lompoc and its people, whether they're users or not users. And I will, in full disclosure here, point out that I didn't vote for any of you. Okay? Now, having said that, I did that to break the tension a little for myself as well, but that's because I only moved here this week. So we'll see what happens as we go on from there. I'm a new resident. But I appreciate what the city attorney put together in showing what all of the steps are going to have to be and how complicated it's going to be. I believe, I've never used it, I don't have a family member who needs it, but I'm willing to accept that there is a medical use for it. I really am. I feel God made everything that's here, and He must have had a good reason for everything, we just haven't figured it out yet. However, I'm asking you to treat it as a medical item, and not regulate it, not tax it, treat it like other drugs. There are laws longstanding and processes on the books of how drugs should be done. I'm not allowed to get whatever prescription, opioid or otherwise, that I get from the doctor and spread it out to the air for other people to sniff. I'm not allowed to leave it and share it with other people. If you will pass laws and have your attorney work real hard on making it similar to how other drugs have to be handled and regulated, that'll work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Hatton, and I do believe that marijuana is a drug that can have people go beyond just smoking it recreationally. I do believe the medical marijuana can help. I do have MS, and I've been going back and forth and back and forth of wanting to use that over my drugs that I have to go and purchase. And I cannot purchase my drugs anywhere but in Santa Barbara, this one pharmacy. I cannot get them up here in Lompoc, I can't get them anywhere else. It's because those opiates are very, very regulated, and I can't get my medicine in a lot of places. But just one place in Santa Barbara, I can go and get it. So to me, it's very disturbing, number one. Number two, I am sick, and it's unfortunate that I have to go and do something like that to get medicine that makes it so that I don't hurt. I am thinking about looking into the medical marijuana. I was told I can use it years ago. I've had MS for like twenty-s somewhat years. So I'm thinking about using that versus opiates, which is, I can't even find them in certain places, they don't sell them. So that is what I'm looking into doing. So medical marijuana, that would help somebody who is sick, I do believe in that, but not recreationally, because then that gets kind of out of control, and people want more than just smoking, they want something to lift them up, like cocaine or anything else. And so that, and that's where it gets dangerous, because I've seen people die from it. So my thing is, the medical marijuana should be legal for people who are ill, as me and the other people who came up here who said the same thing. But other than that, that's what I have to say, because getting opiates are very, very difficult to locate. You can't find them in certain pharmacies, they do not sell them. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Our timekeeper's getting a little distracted, so we'll... Okay, we're back on track now. That's okay. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Lingle and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is John Freel. I'm an organic farmer in Santa Rita Hills and San Ynez Valley. I'm also a resident of the unincorporated Lompoc area. A lot of good points have been made by the community tonight, and I'm glad we've all had an opportunity to discuss this as a group. It's very clear the trajectory that the state is on and what the majority of the people of Santa Barbara County have chosen to move on. I'd just mainly like to point you towards a lot of work towards ordinances that have been developed locally in the state of California. I know Washington and Colorado got a head start on us, but, you know, many different municipalities and counties have been picking up the pieces over the last two years or so. You can look at Monterey County, Sonoma County, Santa Rosa, King City's trying to get into this. This is happening all over California, there's examples to point to for ordinances that have been passed and are adopted and are issuing permits within the state of California. You don't have to reinvent the wheel here. Additionally, the county of Santa Barbara has been working diligently towards their own EIR and a draft ordinance. They have released an issue of the draft ordinance, they've been working very closely with many different stakeholders throughout the industry, as well as public health, and many different county agencies. I would urge you to look at the county's draft ordinance and the language that they're using there. I think they're on track to a very successful ordinance that is well-regulated and also encourages a strong industry. Additionally, when you consider which things to regulate and ban, it's important to consider that this is an entire industry. If you want it to be successful, you have to consider the entire supply chain and allow all facets to thrive, or every other piece will fall apart. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Todd Mitchell. I'm not a resident of Lompoc, but I have come and spoken about this a couple of times. I do have, one of my children, he benefits from medical marijuana. He's registered with County of San Luis Obispo in the state of California. I think that Lompoc should fall onto the trajectory of the state of California, follow the voters, almost sixty percent here. I live in Grover Beach, seventy percent there. And, you know, it does take quite a bit to regulate now that the governor's trailer bill has effectively become law with the state's budget, as well as January of 2018. You know, there's still time to get this into place, and then to later work on those taxes and other things that will increase. And I think, you know, working together to make it be very positive, and to make sure that if people are not following those rules and regulations, that there are things in place to, you know, keep them from operating, is absolutely important. And anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council and Mayor Lingle. My name is Carol Redhead. I moved here, I retired as a pest control advisor for thirty-five years, the state of California in Orange County. I moved here a year and a half ago, was retired. In my business, I've noticed really disheartening things happen to young men and women who work with me, coming to work and on their off time start smoking pot. And I watched them start out as really good citizens, bright, upright, knowledgeable, curious, industrious. I watched them sadly disappear into, like into a hole. And I've seen this so many times, it just makes me sick. So that's why I thought, I just need to say this to you. Plus, I have a very good friend who called me up one day because she told me she had doctor's permission to smoke marijuana since the age of fourteen, to control her ADHD, which she totally had. I saw her with her horses, she had to, she was regimented every minute of her time, every day. And so in the evening, she smoked pot since the age of fourteen or fifteen. Well, one day she called me and she said, I've got some weird things on some plants, could you come and look at them? And I said, well, sure. So I went to see her plants, and I said, why, you're growing pot, and they have mites. And I really can't recommend anything for you that will not make you sick and kill you. And I told that story at her funeral. I'm seventy-five, she would have been seventy-five this year, but she died at age sixty of lung cancer, and she never smoked cigarettes, she smoked pot.
I need you to wrap it up.
So I just have to tell you, you need to see, if you're going to smoke it, you better find out who's using pesticides. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. My name's Lindsay Silva. I'm born and raised here in Lompoc. I just want to speak to the idea of the cannabis community. It actually is a community, it's not just a bunch of thugs and gang members and ignorant people. There's a lot of business people, there's a lot of smart, intelligent people within the community. They also do a lot for their community. I've worked a lot with people in LA that do for the Children's Hospital, for the homeless, literally feeding them every week with, just from donations and things that they get from their dispensaries and things like that. It is literally a group of people that I am not ashamed to be a proud of, or be a part of. This is something that I would love to see within my own communities, especially being here. I want to see a lot more community involvement, including with the children and things like that. It's not something that, we don't have to smoke pot around them to actually contribute to our community in an effective and positive manner. And I would really like to see more positive, a positive outlook on our actual community as a whole, which includes the cannabis community within our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Janet Valenzuela, and my background is nursing, but that's just what I did, it doesn't really apply to what I'm going to say right now. I think we can agree from hearing the people's stories that I don't see any reason why people shouldn't be able to have access to the medical, what they need in terms of the marijuana for their medical needs. And I was, like one other gentleman said, I don't understand why it can't be dispensed as a medication instead of this, the way it's being proposed to do now. But I'm going to kind of maybe tick out, tick off both groups, pro and con. But I think it's sad that if your life is not complete without drugs, or alcohol, or excess food, or whatever it is, I think that's sad, and it's a sad reflection on our society. And there's an old saying, it's going to sound pretty corny right now, but it's like, get high on life. If we took that energy that we put into partying and, hey dude, or whatever, I know, I'm making a stereotype, but take that energy and put it into improving our kids' lives, our schools, our hospitals, our volunteer work, it'd be so much better than being stuck down here. than being stuck down here worrying about, are we going to get our marijuana or not? So I just think, open your minds, do something beyond that. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Council. Terry Hammonds, Lompoc. Well, I'm not, I expect you're probably not going to ban marijuana and cannabis in Lompoc. So, let's get to the real deal. Taxes. You need to have a ballot measure ready to go in 2018. Either June or November of 2018, we need those taxes. There's no sense in messing around. If you're going to do this, let's do it real. Odors. Carpinteria has a problem with odors. Do we want that problem? We're going to have that problem. So let's deal with how we're going to deal with outdoor growth. I say ban it. If people want to grow it, make them put it inside something that controls those odors. The general plan will have to be amended. I believe that's going to be a requirement to get this done. Zoning. Where are we going to put these things? We need to have areas assigned for the cultivation. Permits, cost. We're going to need to collect those costs. And I don't want to see waivers. I don't like that. I don't like that. But I think you will do that. I think you will do that. My challenge to you is, don't do it. Edibles. Are they dangerous? Do we know? We don't know. I just, somebody mentioned that. I looked it up. The Colorado Children's Hospital says it is. So do we want to sell things that are dangerous to children? Money. What are you going to do with this stinky money? Because it's not, it's cash. The banks won't take it. There's a problem with that. Firearms. I don't know what the police chief's going to do about firearms and use and cultivation and distribution of marijuana in the city of Lompoc. I don't know what he's going to do. But it is a federal crime to have a firearm and use, cultivate, and distribute.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Council members and mayor, hi. I had no intention of actually speaking tonight, like many of us, but I would like to say, I'm mentally ill and I need my medicine. I'm not, I'm not partying it up. I'm not whipping it up and having a good time. I need my medicine, I need it regulated. You know, we need to have some control over it. And we need to stop, it's not reefer madness. This is 2017. And inside, I am shaking like you would not believe. But I need to look at each one of you in the face and say, this is something that we have the opportunity to help our parks, our schools, our community. It just needs to be regulated. It's something that's very simple. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, next, please. Okay, seeing, okay.
Mayor Lingel and honorable members of the City Council. My name is Andrew Salazar. Most of you know me. But I understand there's some people here that may not know who I am. I'm a former mayor of the city, and I just want to advise you, this honorable council, to think very carefully about the step that you're facing and what you're about to take. Please pay attention to what your city police chief has told you, and your fire chief has told you, and about half of the citizens are here tonight. I kept track of who spoke in favor and who has spoken opposed. It's about two to one in favor of putting an ordinance together that would legalize recreational as well as medicinal marijuana. However, I can see benefits to the medical use. On the other hand, one asks the question whether or not the benefit to medical use is greater and overcomes the deficits of recreational use. I'm not in favor of alcohol use, and I cannot be in favor of marijuana use for recreational purposes. It doesn't make any sense. However, I think your chief has told you pretty clearly what he faces, your fire chief has told you what he faces, and that's what the city's going to face collectively. There are pros and cons to this issue. But you are going to set the stage for what the city's going to have to do and face, and it's a very complicated question you're facing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment on this. Bring it back to the council, but we are going to take a five-minute
Okay, we're waiting on one more council member, we'll get going in a second. Now, we've got to go back here. Okay, we're waiting on one more council member, we'll get going in a second. Yeah, front TV.
I didn't see the five minute clock.
Okay, so, I've got a question for the council. As you can tell by the report by our city attorney, there's a lot of decisions we have to make on this item, on this issue. So, I'm going to ask if you'd like to continue this until, towards the end of the meeting, try to get through the rest of our agenda, and then if time is available, we'll come back to this, or we can continue it to a further date. Because this alone would take us well into the morning hours, and I don't think we want to do that. And just, so you know, it's not that we want to delay this, but most of us have already put in eight hours of work today. We've been at this council meeting since four o'clock this afternoon, and we want to make the right decision. We don't want to make a decision while we're half asleep, or wishing we weren't here. So, we want to be wide awake when we make these decisions. So, I'm asking the council, do we want to continue the rest of this discussion, possibly towards the end of the meeting? Get through some of it, or even to a future date? Councilmember Mosby?
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate that we continue this, but I think with this little flyer we have out here, we go meet with our constituents, we go, that was what was on the slideshow here, we go down here, maybe make some marks, make some notes on this, and be prepared to advance forward at a future date. I think we tried to go down this list here, like you say, we'd probably hear maybe till Wednesday or Thursday.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, two things. What's this on my microphone? Is this for you? Okay, I just wondered. The second thing was, maybe, you know, you eat an elephant, you do it one bite at a time. Why don't we discuss the medical decision areas? And that would give Mr. Penoni enough time to start at least the medical aspect of an ordinance? Would that work for... It would work for me.
Okay.
It looks like, what do we have? One, two, three, four, five items?
We have more than that. What do we have left on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, if we don't say?
Okay.
I mean, I think that's important also.
Seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12.
Yeah, we've got quite a bit.
Yeah, it is. Maybe that was not a good decision.
Okay, so, Councilmember Starbuck, if you want, we could continue that till later this evening, after we go through the rest of the agenda, but it's, that's going to take alone several hours. Okay, I haven't heard from the two of you. Continue?
I'd like to continue it to when we are a little bit more refreshed, we make better decisions, and go through the rest of this agenda.
Okay. Councilmember Rosbourn?
So, given I seem to be the only one prepared to have this discussion, I will give in to the rest of you and wait and have my discussion when you guys are ready, so.
Well, you could say you want to continue it tonight, but I'm going to say I want to continue it, so it'd be four to one, and you'd lose anyway.
I really want more than just me participating in this discussion, so please, go home, do your research, talk to your constituents, prepare for a discussion, so that we can have a full discussion.
Okay, so, this will be continued to a future date, okay? I just think it's too serious of an item that we try to discuss it while we're half asleep. Okay, I see some nods, oh, that's good, yes. Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, just the one question I have. On the very last page of this, where it talks about taxation, when would we have to have something in place if taxes, fees, et cetera, voter requirements come into play? When do we have to have that done in order to put it on a ballot in 2018? That's going to be the deadline for certain on this, right?
July, oh, I'm getting it, June of 2018.
So, basically, 10 months, we need to have something together with that aspect.
Only the taxes part, you don't get...
Right. I just wanted to know, that's the one deadline, and what is the state deadline on having a policy in place prior to us having it in place before state something happens?
The state has said that they're going to be issuing permits in January, in early January. So, in order for you to retain the total amount of authority you can have, you should have something in place by the end of this year. So, that means you should have it adopted by your last meeting of November, so that the 30 days can run and it'll be effective. I mean, you could have a special meeting, well, you can't have a special meeting to adopt the ordinance. You can introduce it as a special meeting, but you have to adopt it at a regular meeting, so the last meeting of November.
Okay, so those are the only two deadlines we need to be concerned with on here right now, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other clarification on that before we move on? Okay, we're going to move on to item number seven, which is appointing delegates to the League of California Cities Annual Conference. And just so all of you know, the League of California Cities Annual Conference, we have people that can vote on different issues there. So, from what I understand, Councilmember Vega and Councilmember Rosbourn, you're both going?
Yes.
Is any other council members going to the... Okay. And I believe our city manager is going. Is that correct? League of California Cities?
All right, I believe we've had, yeah, I'm sorry, a little hot here. Um, yes, three attendees, right?
Okay, three, yes, Councilmember Rosbourn, Councilmember Vega, and I believe you are attending.
Correct.
Okay, so, so what we need to do is we need to select a voting delegate, and then the other two will become alternates. Have the two of you discussed among yourself who wants to be the voting delegate? Do you have preference? Otherwise, I will... Councilmember Vega, did you have a... Okay. Well, okay, so, what I'd like to do is, since Councilmember Vega is the most senior council member here, going to there, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Vega as the voting delegate, and then we'd have Councilmember Rosbourn and city manager as alternates. Is...
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Okay, that's what we'll do. Now, we are going to move on to item number eight, possible discussion of current compliance or complaint-based code enforcement. That's a council request by Councilmember Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. The council has requested that we bring back information on our current policy, and what we have is implementation of the Long Polk Municipal Code by many departments, as listed in your staff report, and based on the past city council direction, the current code enforcement policy is complaint-based. It's generally implemented by our senior code enforcement officer in economic and community development, who requests signed complaints when accepting code enforcement requests. It's an important safeguard for the community to avoid the appearance of staff, is singling out any specific individuals or properties. When a signed complaint form is received, as outlined in your staff report, there are a number of steps that are automatically taken. We do send an initial letter, signed by the mayor. If that results in the violation being resolved, the code enforcement case is closed. We do send out through planning, three letters, each addressing the issue. If that does not occur to resolve the problem, then the city's paralegal will send another letter. If that does not resolve it, the city prosecutor will determine how to move forward. The senior code enforcement officer is also authorized to issue administrative citations if violations are not corrected after the notice. Also listed in your staff report are how the health and safety in the building code and fire violations are handled through either a notice of violation or a notice of abatement. The signed complaint has been staff standard practice, and there is, that way, a point of contact if additional information is received. The fiscal impact is if the council directs staff to continue the complaint-based policy, there would be no additional impact. If council directs staff to accept anonymous complaints, there is anticipated that there would be an increase in the workload, and we do have a limited staff resource. So, that outlines our current staff approach to complaint-based code enforcement, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Brees? Councilmember Mosby?
Yeah, in your report, it says that the complaint is confidential, not disclosed unless disclosure is ordered by a court. Do you know of any time that the city, where that, the person who filed the complaint was disclosed by a court?
Uh, no, our aim in code enforcement is voluntary compliance. Taking a case to court would be our last, absolute last resort, so we've not had that issue come to us at this point.
So, basically, then, for all intents and purposes, the complaints have pretty much been anonymous, then, to the person who the complaint was filed against, correct?
That is correct, but we have the information should we need to... If we do go to court, we would have a basis for having started the code enforcement process and proceeding with it.
Right, but what I was getting at, though, is because of the way the process is right now, there is a level of anonymity that's developed here in the code enforcement process, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's been one of my concerns about this, is that level that is there, and it just seems to have a tendency to lead toward a level of abuse of people filing code complaints, because they can do it anonymous. And I've witnessed a level of this, I brought it to your attention, are they going to pass it? I also reviewed a number of internal emails that I made a records request on, and saw how it kind of operates behind the scene, and I was really astonished of what really the activity is going on. I didn't bring all of them, but I think it was about 1,000 or 1,100 that I had seen in reviewing one instance over a two-year period, just done by one individual, or in the communication of one individual, so it does... I, well, I'll let the other.
So, Ms. Brees, the, even though the code is... Oh, Mr. Wyman, or do you have a question?
I just wanted to quickly ver, just to clarify, not to contradict, but just clarify that anonymous and confidential are two different things, but just to clarify, I believe Mr. Mosby clarified it right in saying anonymous to the, to the party being complained about, if you will, to the property being complained about. It's, we generally do not accept or respond to anonymous complaints. We, somebody has to back that up, and we would keep that confidential. And that's different than saying we work off of anonymous complaints, which isn't the case, it's confidential. I just wanted to clarify the two.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can respond back, the only reason why I use the word anonymous is because as down, further down there, it referenced the word anonymous, and going, that's why I referenced directly that way.
So, Ms. Brees, you get the complaint, it's signed, you investigate, and if the complaint is legitimate, then we take action on it.
That's correct.
So, I guess my question is whether it's maybe, as Councilmember Mosby said, maybe getting even a retaliatory, if there is a, if there is a code violation, it still needs to be addressed anyway, because there is a violation of that code. Okay. Councilmember Starbuck?
Ms. Brees, I just, you know, our code enforcement is not purely complaint-driven, though, is it? We are doing proactive code enforcement in some areas.
If we, if our senior code enforcement officer is out viewing a complaint that we have received in the field, and he sees a complaint that's visible from the public way, some violation of the code, he will fill out a form and initiate a code enforcement action.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious about that, because what I wanted, I guess the point is, we're not discussing code enforcement, but I wanted, like, the city right-of-way easements, some of these things, these are all done through our code enforcement officer at that point, then? This is not, people in the city are not going to turn in a written complaint about a hedge, a fence, you know? So, this is a proactive thing that the city's doing.
Well, we do receive complaints about hedges and fences, and landscaping that goes over public sidewalks, where it becomes difficult for the pedestrians, they have to go out into the street, so we do receive...
Something like that, I understand. I was just, I'm going to, later, when we have a future council discussion on code enforcement, wanted to bring this up, but I just, the proactive versus reactive was a big decision or discussion a few months, years ago, and we've evolved back to the, you know, complaint-driven code enforcement, and so I was just curious about that.
Well, I'm going to open this up for public comment first, and I'll make my next comment, so, open for public comment.
How much time do I have?
Three minutes.
Okay. So, Terry Hammons, Long Polk. I, I'm kind of confused as to why this is even on the agenda, and why it was approved to be on the agenda. The matter of anonymous, confidential, I mean, really, if it either is a violation or it isn't a violation, and that's really what it comes down to. If you get a notice of a violation, and it isn't a violation, okay, no big deal. If it is a violation, correct the violation and get rid of it. Having this played out like this is politics. This is politics. City staff needs to be informed that politics has no place in their code enforcement decision-making, and that a city council member's interest in a particular case, or the latest newspaper editorial, do not create their priorities. Staff should know not to succumb to such pressure, and should be comfortable asking the city attorney's office to intervene if interference occurs. Regular meetings with staff are appropriate to address any problem issues, assist with proper prioritization, and provide information on the relevant law. This will ensure that decisions from the beginning of the code enforcement process are made without improper motive. Please, council, let's get this right. We have been playing around with this code enforcement since the 90s, and it's still not worked out right. This whole five, five of you sitting up here deciding whether it's confidential, anonymous, who cares? Who cares? You're wasting all of our time and our money and everything else talking about some ridiculous thing as to a word, anonymous, confidential. Please get over it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sorry, didn't get up quick enough. John Lynn Long Polk, resident. You know, I was in a meeting with Peter Adam one day, and we were talking about code enforcement when I was mayor, and he related a story that I think is germane to what we're talking about here. He's on the board of a good-sized HOA, and they had had a spate of complaints. Some of them were extremely petty, and the board frankly was tired of it, and they chose to make a decision that they would no longer accept anonymous complaints. People had to sign their name to something, and, you know, if it's truly a complaint, you should be willing to sign your name. I think in all my time in the city, I filed one, not when I was the mayor, by the way. I suppose you can say that it has a little chilling effect, but I think that's far outweighed by someone who is unhappy with someone else and files continuous complaints, looking for a reason. And this is exactly what Laurel Barcelona counseled all of us on the council about at that time, that we were standing in a doorway, and, you know, Laurel never ever said, "Do this," or "Don't do that," but I think if she had had a choice, she would have said, "Don't do this." And that was when we moved from complaint-based, the identity was not secret, because once upon a time, I had copies of about two years' worth. When I was mayor, I needed to return them, because there was another whole issue. I think what she would have said, then, is, "You're stepping through a door that's going to cause you more problems than it's going to give you satisfaction." So, clearly, we have to have code enforcement, because there are those people who abuse things. It's just the way it is. But on the other hand, we don't need people who abuse the system by filing numerous complaints under different names. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're closed, public comment. So, my comment is, number one, we do have people that have complaints, they are signed. Okay, let's start with that. When someone makes a complaint about code enforcement, they sign the complaint. It's investigated, and if it is a complaint, rightfully so, it should be corrected. If it's not, I mean, if it's a violation, it should be corrected. If it's not a violation, we apologize to the resident, and we move on. Councilmember Mosby mentioned that he reviewed over 1,000 emails of complaints that came to me. He didn't say it was from me, but he did. He made a public records request, and he wanted all complaints that had come to me via email. And as he said, there were over 1,000. And if, he will know that many of those complaints, at least some of those complaints, I won't even say many, but some of those complaints were directed to me because they feared the person that had the violation. They feared retaliation from the individual making those complaints. So, there is some fear, yes. Maybe some people make petty complaints because they don't like their neighbor. That's a possibility, but again, our code enforcement people will go and investigate. If there's a violation, correct it. But I think we also have an obligation that people that feel that they cannot make a complaint because of the person they're making complaint against has either warned them not to, or they've, or they have... As a matter of fact, Councilmember Mosby mentioned one time, why can't the neighbors just get along and do it? Well, sometimes the neighbors do try to get along with the neighbors, they complain, not complain, they talk to the neighbors. not complain, they talk to the neighbor, but the neighbor doesn't correct it, and maybe it becomes, I won't say violent, but raises their voice, we'll put it that way. So they feel they have to, that's when I start getting complaint, or the emails. I turn the email over to code enforcement, they investigate it. If, again, if it's a violation, they ask to have it corrected. If it's not a violation, no harm, no foul. So I like the policy we have right now. Every complaint is signed, and when I get a email, it is signed as well, from the individual. So they're all signed complaints. So I don't see a problem with our, with our system. Now, granted, Mr. Mosby, there are some individuals that may get petty and file against their neighbor for silly things, but I think our city staff can take care of that. Councilmember Mosby.
And I think primarily, the whole process is working well, as, but I, what I do believe is, the person has the right to know their accuser. And constitutionally, under criminal, I believe you have that right to know your accuser. City manager's nodding their head, yes. And I feel in this case here, that the person should have the right to know their accuser as well. And if the person feels that there's a level of intimidation, like you said, you're willing to take a complaint and file it for them. So there are alternatives if they feel that there's a level of intimidation. But what I believe is happening is the pendulum's gone the other way, and the intimidation is on the person that's being accused. And it's not, I've just seen multiple cases, the people that contacted me where they feel, and it has that layer of suspicion, where they feel that it's this person, or that person, or that neighbor, or that neighbor. And then you get that, that whole, which, who is it? Who's did it? And I've had a number of cases where people contacted me when they had an issue with the city, and shortly thereafter, they had a code complaint against them. So they felt that the city was doing something. And if the person had the right to know their accuser, which I believe they do, they would, they wouldn't, it would take out the whole guess. They would know what the deal is, and maybe they could talk to him and find out what really is wrong, and get things straightened out. And that's, that's the level I'm looking at. I believe that people should, in this town, know who is pushing the complaint forward and get rid of the speculation.
Okay. I mean, if there's a violation, it should be addressed, whether it's anonymous, or, I don't use the word anonymous, confidential or not. If it's a, if it's an issue that needs to be addressed, it should be addressed. Anyone else? Councilmember Osborne.
So the current process obviously works most of the time, and there's been some outlier issues. And what I see is that the current process protects the person being filed against, especially if there's no violation, then no action's taken. The anonymity of the complainant can't be abused as long as the property's not in violation. So the real issue is, do we have a scenario in place that if there is proposed via abuse, do we have a contact as a way to bring the both parties together to have that discussion of, "There appears to be an abuse," rather than there is constant violation? Do we have, say, an Almsman Bud program that we can facilitate a discussion that eliminates this? Because I think asking people who have become angry with each other, where they have started with each other and that's not worked, or whether they didn't go there because of a fear, they need an arbitrator. And if we don't have something like that, it doesn't matter how much we change this as to whether they're signed in confidential, signed in anonymous, if we aren't able to help move it past the abuse cycle.
Councilmember Osborne. Depending upon the nature of the complaint, before my office files any action, we would set up an office hearing, where both sides would be asked to come in and talk.
Councilmember Mosby.
Give you an example of some of the complaints that are filed against these people. One, their hedge was about six inches too tall, because you have three foot as the level. And I mean, really? I mean, they didn't trim their hedge in time. Another one was, one lady got five complaints filed against her in a short amount of time, and they were very petty complaints. Somebody had abandoned some trash in the alley next to their, you know, got violated for that. Basketball hoop in the street, they removed the basketball hoop, but they'd left a four-by-four in the street. Petty, petty things. But there are layers of her, of, the people are feeling harassed. They wouldn't have contacted me if they didn't feel that. And whoever was doing it, again, this, this person was obviously going after them and waiting for them to sneeze to get them. And I know the lady felt definitely harassed about it, and, you know, you get a little letter in the mail from the city, it can be a little traumatizing for people. But we've got quite a few people have contacted me who feel that there's that level of harassment out there, and I believe they should have the right to know their accuser. I don't see anything wrong with that. If they feel that they, they can't do it, well, they can find the mayor or somebody else to file the complaint for them. But again, why would you allow somebody to file these complaints and just get away with it on and on and on again? And no matter how petty, I mean, we can go to just about anybody's property and find a complaint, where there's a vehicle parked on the grass somewhere, or whatever it might be. It's real easy to do that. Real easy. None of us are, are perfect and walking on water.
Ms. Brees, what, roughly, what percent of the complaints you see coming in are, would you consider petty?
We, most of the complaints that we received are founded, our code enforcement officer goes out and investigates, there is something there. Maybe five percent is not. But usually, our first letter, which is the letter signed by the mayor, asks that the person contact us. And it, it's education. A lot of people just don't realize there's a code against whatever they're doing, and most people will comply, once they're advised that they're in violation of the code.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion, because there, as Councilmember Mosby saw, the complaints that came to me were because they felt that they would be retaliated against if they made it, made it public, so. And with public records requests, you got, you got to see all those complaints anyway, so. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we allow, or we direct city staff to continue with the current code compliance, complaint-based code enforcement policy. That's my motion. I'll need a second.
Before this is seconded, back in time, I recall that we had actually sent out a paper with the utility billing that listed, "These are the, the codes that we're going to enforce." Remember, no parking on the grass, no grass over eight inches tall, or whatever. And it listed specifically what the city was going to, you know, the code enforcement people were going to go out and look for. That was part of the turn from when we wanted to go into a proactive type of code enforcement. Have we done away with that totally? I mean, does, am I the only one that remembers this? Everybody received it in their utility bill. It was a one-page, and it, I forget the section that was out, but it listed all these types of complaints, that, you know, no broken windows, no boarded-up windows, no, you know, on and on.
If it was done one time in the past, it is not something that we continue to do.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. That passes four one. Thank you. Okay, move on to item number nine.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, you had a motion, but I, I think I can make another motion.
It's already been decided, so you can't. It's ready to be, been voted on.
He could make, he could make a motion, if he wants to make a motion, on something related to that same agenda item.
Go ahead.
And just for the record, and I, I want to make a motion that, that we are, do have a complaint-based code enforcement, and I agree with that. But again, what, what my motion is, that the person complaining against should have the right to know their accuser. And as, just as it says here for the fiscal impact, that if it is anonymous, which is basically what is happening right now, it's confidential, but then it is anticipated there will be an increase in the number of cases filed. And the process that we have right now has a lot of bogus cases filed. And I believe that people have the right to know their accuser, and I'm making a motion that, that people should have the right to know the, it should be disclosed, and the person who's filing the complaint. That the person who is being accused, the accusation is against, has the right to know the person who filed the complaint. That's my motion. To keep everything else the same, but the ability for the person, if they make the records request, they can see who filed the complaint against them.
Is there a second?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Brannoni real quickly. Now, I mean, I receive a complaint, we could add a sentence on the bottom, if you'd like, or you question this, you could please contact, you know, code enforcement. They could discuss this with you and tell you who the accuser was, if there was a question on this, right? I mean, does it have to be anonymous or confidential? Could I call you up if somebody code-enforced me and say, "Hey, Mr. Boggs, who, who did this? Is it ...?"
The complainant's name is kept confidential from everybody. Unless the matter goes to criminal court, then the accuser has a right to know who that complaining person is.
So legally, you couldn't come down here and say, "Who accused me of having tall hedges? You couldn't tell me that, then?"
Correct.
That's a law?
No, it's a policy the city has.
So...
Following, following the, the Public Records Act. The Public Records Act provides the authority to the city to not have investigative or code enforcement matters published or made public to anybody.
So Councilmember Mosby's request, then, would have to be a policy change, or would it affect-
Yes.
-the public records?
It, it would be a policy change, and once a record is given to anyone, anybody who comes in and can ask for that same information. So if, if an accuser's name or a complainant's name is given to the person that's being complained about, and a third party comes in and says, "I want to know if there's any complaints by X person," we'd have to give that person that information. So the complainant, the complainant's name is, would be available to the whole world because of the Public Records Act.
But wouldn't it still be because of the Public Records Act?
No, because the Public Records Act has an exception for code enforcement investigative types of information and records.
So this motion is going to die without a second. We're gonna move on to item number nine now, discussion of building permit policies and installation of toilets, faucets, and similar household improvements. Who's gonna handle this?
Mayor, councilmembers, Mark Bray, acting fire chief. Chief Ladapal did a presentation on this, January 17th, at the council meeting, January 17th, where he outlined work that's exempt from permits and work that needed permits. Instead of revising that, I'm gonna use this opportunity to introduce our, our new building official. He's with Muni-Temp. This is Michael Lockett, and I'm gonna let you, let him answer the question for me.
It's a nice cop-out.
Thank you.
Currently, I talked to our permit tech, and she stated to me that, that in the last two years, they haven't issued a permit for just changing out a commode in a residence. My past experience over the last 20 years is, usually permits are initiated when, let's say, they have to dig up part of the sewer line and, and replace, and that would encompass the toilet, or they're doing a bathroom remodel, that would require the permit. Currently, you know, when somebody goes and changes out a, a commode in their house, the, you can't purchase these high-flow toilets at the Home Depot, or, there are already low-flow toilets that are, are getting replaced in there.
Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I'm the one that brought this, this question up, the, and there was a, a level of, of question on this before, that's why we're trying to get down to it. And when it was, I know plumbers had, had ability, like, when they were doing water heaters, they had, used to have cards, and they could come and get the card when they're doing the installs, and made it easier for both sides. Is that something, and I meant to get a copy of one of the old cards, but that way they could get, like, 10 at a time, and they did in, like, a self-inspection. Is that something that the city's gonna be able to do again, or is that something that...
I could look into that.
Because I know, in talking with some of the plumbers, and of course, the time of it is right now and such, because it's, what you're looking at, if the plumber has to come here, pull the permit, go back, you're, you're adding hundreds of dollars onto the install. And they had mentioned to me, that it would be a lot easier if they could do the card like they did before with the self-inspection, where you can do follow-up inspection, and you find out they're not doing that, they're not allowed to do the self-inspection anymore. That was where the old process worked.
And, and, yeah, I, I'm not privy to the old process here, but there was some annual permits that, at, at some other jurisdictions that I've been at, that we could give the plumbers for small projects, and they could do that, and then they could come in at their leisure and get the permit, you know, if they're changing out a commode or something like that. You know, a, a small section of sewer line that you're not gonna put a whole 10-foot ahead of a water test on, on the whole house.
And by the annual permit, what's, what's that?
You would, you would come up with some type of guidelines on what they would be able to do with that permit?
Okay.
Nothing major, you know, it'd be minor repairs.
And most of the, the questions that we were looking at was questioning whether, whether they could do, you know, like, the replacement of a, of a simple light fixture, whether that was allowed, or how, what the complexity that was gonna, to go with that is. If you're going down to Home Depot and you're grabbing a light fixture down there, and you're slapping it in, are you, does somebody have to come over here and pull the permit for...
You know, and, and the, the light fixtures now, with the Title 24, with the energy code, they have to be high-efficiency light fixtures that are being replaced. I think I just got a plan on my desk today, changing out probably five or six can lights and a, and a, putting in a sliding glass door. Yeah, that, that would require a permit, and they, they have to show that they're, they're putting in the high-efficiency lighting and, and calling those lighting, what, what really is getting in place, the zero clearance, the can lights.
Yeah, it's a little more complicated than just in your kitchen, you're dropping, just doing a change out of a, a simple fixture, is that...
Yeah, I, I, why are you gonna get all excited with, like that with the homeowner?
Okay. And, and like faucets, because I know that's, you know, there's hundreds of faucets that are all-
Repairers, that's, that's a repair.
Yeah, but if you're, yeah, okay, repair. There you go. And that, and that would make, unfortunately, the plumbers didn't make it all here tonight, but we can get the work out.
I've been, I've been making contact with the, with the plumbers and, and the contractors that have been coming in and, and just kind of telling them how I do things.
All right, is it one of the paths, they, they were freaking out before, they're saying, you know, "What are the homeowners gonna do? And they're gonna, $200, $300 more, it's gonna add on to a water heater install."
Sure.
You know, what are they gonna, you're gonna get a lot of weekend warriors, and you're gonna force it a different direction, so...
And that happens, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm glad that you're, I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
And, you know, thanks for the, getting the, the conversation going, and I think we'll, we'll have to get the word out real fast on this, and...
Appreciate it. Thank you. It was nice meeting you all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any public comment? We'll close public comment. There was really no action item on this. There was really no action item on this. Does council wish to have any action with more information? Okay, we're gonna move on to item number 10, and is Christie here? Oh, there you are, okay. So this is number 10, receipt of annual compliance report.
I don't know if you wanna dim the lights and everyone go to sleep. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, staff, and public. I'm Kristi Alarcon, Community Development Program Manager here at the city. Tonight I have the annual compliance report to present to you. Staff recommend city council receive the annual compliance report for the period of July 1, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, including the audit and compliance findings report, sub-recipient compliance status report, and council can also provide direction if any is deemed appropriate. On April 15th, 2014, the city council adopted the sub-recipient financial programmatic and monitoring reporting requirement policy. The policy required an annual compliance report to be presented to city council at a public meeting. City Management Services Department provided an audit compliance and findings report to the Economic and Community Development Department and city manager on July 13th, 2017. The policy contains financial reporting requirements for those sub-recipients that receive more than $50,000 of city funding in any single fiscal year. For the period of July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, the agencies determined to be subject to the policy are listed here. Um, they include the Chamber, the Housing Authority, Community Action Commission, the Lompoc Museum, and North County Rape Crisis. Of those agencies subject to the policy, the Chamber and the Museum requested the lesser reporting requirement, which was considered and approved by the Compliance Committee on July 13th. No audit findings were noted in any of the reports submitted. The sub-recipient compliance status report consists of the following components: the sub-recipient agency and activity monitoring, the multifamily and single-family affordable housing monitoring, and our commercial property monitorings. The sub-recipient agency and activity monitoring consists of site visits to the locations where the activities are conducted. Listed are the agencies and programs visited on the right. These site visits occurred in October 2016 for agencies funded with 1617 community development block grant and human services funds. In addition to city community development division staff, human services commissioners attend these site visits. The visits consist of two components, both fiscal and programmatic review. There were no negative findings noted during this monitoring. Notices for the multifamily affordable housing monitoring were sent in April 2017, and visits began in May 2017. Eighteen properties were included in the housing quality standards component of the monitoring review, while three, which are listed down there at the bottom, are not subject to the HQS component. All projects or properties are subject to the programmatic review. Seventy-five of the 334 units under regulatory agreement were physically inspected. Six units require minor rehab and/or corrections to tenant files. Corrective action plans were issued in regards to those units, and property management or owners were given 60 days to submit proof of corrective action. Because of the timing of submission of this report, the outcomes of the, um, compliance status report would be reported out in January 2018 on those six findings. Single-family affordable housing monitoring consists of annual confirmation and verification of owner occupancy. These various funding sources that you see listed on the left, um, cause the requirement for the owner occupancy of these units. Forty-two homes were monitored, and all of the 42 units remain owner occupied. Typically, the regulatory agreement on commercial loans requires the borrower maintain the property in a manner reasonably satisfactory to the city. One property is currently under regulatory agreement and is in good physical appearance. The other commercial loan that we have has the requirement of job creation, and now at this point, retention. That business is also in compliance. While there is no direct fiscal impact apparent through accepting this report, there is a fiscal component related to the cost of staff time associated with the task required to create the report presented tonight. The task listed there, which includes conducting the monitoring program review and site visits, the HQS inspections, and oftentimes re-inspections, examining tenant files for compliance and income eligibility, reviewing the audits and financials of the agency subject to the policy, as well as coordinating the compliance committee meeting and compiling this amazing presentation to city council. Staff assigned to the monitoring processes are budgeted in the Housing Successor Agency Fund, which, as you all know, receives limited funding due to the dissolution of the city's redevelopment agency in 2012. Additional resources are provided from the Housing Trust Fund. At this time, no general fund resources are expended for activities related to the policy. This concludes the presentation of the annual compliance report as required in the sub-recipient financial programmatic and monitoring requirement policy. Should you have any questions or concerns, I'm happy to try and address them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm just gonna make a comment. The fiscal impact is certainly worth not letting it get out of control.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Any other questions? Great report.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open this up for the public. Seeing no one rise, we're gonna close public comment, bring it back to the council. Um, I guess all we need to do is just, um, accept and receive this report. It's probably the actions we need to take. Motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we accept and receive this report.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, um, now I'm gonna make a recommendation, get this, well, let's see, first go, let's go to written communications. Yeah, no, it's written communications first.
You've, you've received several written communications. They have been, um, put out for the, um, I'm sorry, my brain has stopped.
For the public.
To the public, and they will be posted to the, um, website tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so what I'm gonna recommend now, 'cause at this point, we'd go back to item number three that was pulled from the consent calendar. It's getting late, and I think the staff needs some time to look at this item, since it appears that... Did you wanna make a comment?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Starbuck, because you have a conflict, you need to step down from the agenda. When it was on the consent agenda, but we pulled it off the consent agenda.
Councilmember Starbuck owns property within 500 feet of the project, that's why... Okay, go ahead.
Hey, Mike Luther, uh, city engineer. So I believe the, the question revolved around when the project was originally brought to council in conceptual fashion in, uh, May of 2013. There was a restroom component to the project. As Christie just, just mentioned, um, in 2012, the RD redevelopment agency was dissolved, and those, the spot where the restroom was proposed is on, located on a property owned by the RDA. And shortly after that period of time, it became, initially it became, it was presented to the city that, uh, we wouldn't be able to retain the property. And at that time, the restroom was removed from the design, we had to move forward with design, so we moved forward with the sawtooth portion of the design. Uh, so that's the reason there's no, there's no restroom in there, in this component. It's still possible to, to do that now, you know, the, the land ownership has been resolved, I believe, and, I don't know the dates, but I know it's resolved now. The, the city owns the, the lots. Um, but I did wanna point out that, um, since that time, um, CDBG has moved forward with a restroom project downtown in Centennial Park they're working on. So I don't know if you need two restrooms, but, um, it's, it's definitely still possible to build restrooms, um, as part of a transit project.
Okay, so I was gonna originally, I didn't know we had the information, I was originally gonna recommend that we, um, put this forward to a future meeting, but it looks like we've already opened it up, so...
Yeah, but I, I mean, I would recommend that you move forward with at least the, the sawtooth's component at this time. I mean, the, the, the funding for this project is Prop 1B, and it does expire. So we do have a timeline, so we, we should, we should build this project with the Prop 1B funding that's proposed, so that we don't have any, um, potential of losing that funding.
And I'd just like to clarify that the, um, Centennial Park is part of the map, the feasibility study for restrooms at a multiple, multiple locations throughout the city parks. So at this point, it's only funded in the accessibility assessment.
Councilmember Vega. Oops, okay. Any questions for Mr. Luther?
Actually, a question for Ms. Galavan. How long before the Centennial restrooms would be brought forward to us?
I'll let Christie go ahead and, um, talk about that.
It wouldn't necessarily be brought to council for approval. What is gonna end up happening is the feasibility study would be concluded, and we anticipate that happening within the next couple of months. And then once that is done, we will have the list of all of the issues that are, that are involved with the various sites, and then, um, make a determination on which ones would receive priority on funding first. So, um, we have identified a couple just due to some other grant funding we've received that would probably take the first priority, but we've, in looking at priorities and projects and workload, we're thinking we can do three at one time. So hopefully that one would be number three, within, I would say, fiscal year 17, 18. Thank you.
And Mr. Luther, if we chose to move forward with this project, but also add a bathroom to the, would it be adding it to this bathroom, or to, to this project?
It would, it would, uh, be a separate project at this point.
And is there money available for that?
Uh, we'd have to find another funding source, but, uh, there's, there's other transit funding sources that would be eligible for this.
And is it possible to do that bathroom in that area concurrently with this project?
Uh, at this point, no, 'cause there, there's no, there's no plans for a bathroom, there's no environmental document completed for the bathroom, there's, um...
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Luther? Okay, we'll open this up, we'll open this up to the public for comment.
Okay, for a second, small bite?
Go ahead.
Okay. Still John Lynn. I appreciate Mike's explanation. Um, it's unfortunate that that information didn't come to the council, because there was a pretty clear council direction. The environmental work for the sawtooth is a categorical exemption, something that can be done rather quickly for a bathroom. Uh, I think in the past, I've seen one done in 40 days when we really wanted to get something done. Uh, in terms of design work for the bathroom, the most expedient way to do it is, I think we're all familiar with, is the one they bring in on a truck and sit down on top of your plumbing connections. Uh, those plans are readily available from at least two vendors the city's used in the I would hate to see us lose the transit funding, so I suppose I have to say you should go ahead and pass it, but with that, I think you should include the fact that a restroom needs to be put there in the most expedient way possible. Whether you choose to use a drop-in, if you will, or a stick build, that's up to y'all. I just don't wanna see all the work that we did for a four-year period to get this darn thing done disappear. And although a restroom at Centennial Park is kinda nice, it doesn't do really very much for all the people that come and go through the transit stop, including about 600 every morning that get on the Clean Air Express buses. So, please be sure that that gets done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close public comment, bring it back to the council. Discussion? Motion?
I'll move to, um, award the project for the transit, center transfer project, but I'd really like to see a bathroom come back as soon as possible for that area.
Is that part of your...
And I'll give it a second also with the same recommendation, that we'd like to see a bathroom in that area, um, for the record.
Okay. Okay, is that clear, the motion clear? It's staff recommendation plus a bathroom in the area as soon as possible. Is that the motion?
I'll leave the motion as is to accept the award, and we can have discussion afterwards about the restroom.
Okay, so, Councilmember Vega, so you made a second contingent upon the restroom. Now she's...
I was reiterating what she had stated previously, so I was just kind of reinstating what Councilwoman Mosby said.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to accept staff recommendation. Okay, discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 4-0 with one abstention, I guess, yeah. Okay, Councilmember Starbuck can return to the dais.
Was there gonna be a discussion about the restroom?
She's, I guess, at a future date.
I'll make it as part of a council request.
Okay, um, oral communication, this is your last opportunity to speak to us for up to two minutes on any item that can come before this council. Seeing no one rise, we're gonna close oral communication, go on to council requests, comments, and meeting reports. Councilmember Mosby.
I just, a quick comment, I did talk with the executive director of Firms, San Barbara County Association of Governments, and she did forward some information, uh, for potential grants from the Traffic Safety Grant Program for potentials for crossing guard grants to look in, and, uh, Public Works, I already forwarded the email to them and initiated investigation on that. I just had a quick document, unfortunately, we didn't get to the budget issue, but just a quick document to, to pass out, um, just some quick, simple numbers given to me on how much, uh, we're putting, you can do for your analysis, here's some extras over there, of how much money, um, the utilities, uh, coming back from the utilities to the general fund, just a, just simple compilation of numbers through the, the cost allocation book, enterprise reimbursement analysis, and the, um, the budget book, just something to see that approximately $21 million of enterprise funds-
that approximately $21 million of enterprise funds is anticipated to be redirected back to the general fund in this cycle.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports, but just on the chance that we don't get the budget through, do we want to consider doing a budget extension resolution, or having one ready for the next meeting?
Yeah, we already have that queued up to be on the next agenda, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Next thing was, do we want to do a special budget meeting, or possibly a cannabis policy meeting? Just to kind of maybe spread out the length of our meetings, just a council question, not a request.
Sure, I guess that'd be for Mr. Wyman, the reason we didn't discuss it today was, he, the staff was still working on that, so I think you still would like to have at least these two weeks to complete the report.
Right, and, but I, that's on the, answering on the budget side. As to the cannabis, I personally think that's a good idea, because, you know, it's hard to picture our, we're rolling along on a pretty heavy schedule of agenda items right now, as we go meeting to meeting. It's, we're just in that kind of season. And given that both the marijuana issue and the budget issue, but certainly the marijuana issue is some heavy lifting, just because the number of considerations to walk through, it's probably worth designating a special meeting, I think, but.
Yeah, I was just, I'm gonna just say that the whole cannabis issue is a lot more than I thought. And, you know, I mean, there's no way in one meeting we're gonna get it done, and it could take up a whole bunch of several meetings, so I just wanted to throw it out there.
Would you like?
I'd support a special meeting on cannabis.
Okay. Anyone else? He needs two, two more.
I'd support a meeting also, as long as it's not bundled up with budget meetings, you know, he needs a couple of weeks to get the budget meeting together, okay, so we forgot, if you want to do something in between, or something afterwards.
So the city attorney points out, there's a fifth Tuesday in August, if that's, happens to be a night that's available.
Well, I'm kind of looking at next Tuesday, the 8th, would, would that?
Are you gonna be ready to talk about cannabis next Tuesday?
I'm ready tonight, you're the one that's fourthed. Okay, Mr. Pinoni, are you available on the 8th?
Sorry, I'm not.
Okay, would you be available on the 29th?
Yes.
How about a special meeting for the cannabis on the 29th? Okay?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, okay, are we all okay with the 29th? Okay.
To start at 6:30?
Start at 6:30, yes, Councilmember Mosby, are you okay with the 29th? Okay, so a special meeting to discuss only cannabis on the 29th.
Okay. So we don't have to talk about it in between anymore, right?
You can talk to whomever you, constituents, if you want to get information, yeah. Councilmember Vega, any reports?
No reports, sir, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Rosborn?
No reports, but I would like to make a request that we have staff returned for a bathroom at the transit area.
Just for clarification on that, would you like us, I mean, you don't mean immediately, you mean let, allow us some time to search for the grant.
Allow some time to do the research and the right application and funding, absolutely.
Okay, she needs second and a third on that.
I'll give her a second.
And do we have a third? I'll give her the third. Okay, I attended many meetings, but I just want to, and none at city expenses, but I just want to bring to attention two of them. On the 25th, Assembly Member Jordan Cunningham was in town, and he presented Southside Coffee Shop with a, an award from the State Assembly as, I think, Small Business of the Month. Small Business of the Month for the state of California, that's Southside Coffee. I think, pretty impressive. And then on the 26th, I attended a law enforcement appreciation breakfast at St. Mary's Episcopal Church, well attended by, I think, every law enforcement agency in Santa Barbara County, so, two great events. Nothing at city expense, and if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned to a regular City Council meeting, 6:30 PM on Tuesday, August 15. Thank you and good night.